Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the December 3, 2018, meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board. I'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first thing I'd like to do is just announce that, and some people have heard, the death of one of our active-duty police officers, Officer Mark Mandralla, who passed away this week after serving the town for 23 years. And in his memory, I'd like to just have one moment of silence, please. Thank you. We're going to have, start with some announcements and then residents' comments. Our major discussion today is a discussion about the DPW facility and what we believe to be the final, or a final solution to our, what we found is asbestos-containing material on-site. And also a discussion about, a review with our auditors and our Audit Committee. And we'll be having a quick executive session to talk a little bit about some negotiations that are going on for the town. I'd like to start, if I could, with any announcements. So if there are any announcements, Stephen, do you have an announcement?
Yes, Mark. And thank you, everyone, for observing a moment's silence for Mark Mandralla, longtime veteran of the Police Department and just a really good guy, very highly regarded by not only the Police Department but all the town departments with whom he worked, and we're going to miss him. His wake will be Wednesday from 4:00 to 8:00 at the...
Serpil.
Serpil, yeah. Chickapee. Serpil Funeral Home at 69 East Street in Chickapee. The funeral services will be private on Thursday morning, so if people want to pay their respects Wednesday afternoon from 4:00 to 8:00, is the time to do that. And in lieu of flowers, donations can be made to the Long Meadow Police Benevolent Association at 34 William Street, or the American Tinnitus Association, PO Box 424049, Washington DC 20042. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other announcements by members of the Select Board? This time, I'd open the meeting to the floor. Any residents' comments? If any residents have comments, please raise your hand. Come forward. Just please state your name and address. Mr. Jason, Mr. Jason. And we just ask that you hold your comments to a minute or two. Number one. And number two, I'd just say that our comments are a chance for citizens to speak, but not to begin a dialogue with the Select Board. So you shouldn't expect a dialogue in return. Go ahead.
I understand. Thank you very much. Good evening. My name is Andrea Chase, and I live at 236 Crestview Circle. I'm here to ask the Select Board, in its role as governing body, for the town of Long Meadow to do three things to help the town's residents, from the development of a small industrial-sized gas metering and pigging station smack in the middle of a fully-developed residential area that includes one of the town's three elementary schools. I would like to also say there are a lot of people here on this issue, and if they would like to stand, you can see how many people, or have them raise their hands, are here on this issue. As you probably know, the Long Meadow Country Club, on November 28th, voted to grant the sale to the Tennessee Gas Pipeline as an option for an easement on their property, approximately two acres, that are bordered by Hazardville Road and Shaker Road. Construction for the four-building metering and pigging stations to start sometime in June of 2019. The club will receive $2.7 million for this sale, and it'll be used primarily, as I understand it, to overhaul the 50-year irrigation system for the golf course. I'm a member of an ad hoc group called the Long Meadow Pipeline Awareness Group, and we're a small group that formed in the early spring of 2018 when we learned about Columbia Gas's intention to do more than repair and replace the aging infrastructure that supports the delivery of natural gas to the homes and businesses of the town. It appears that Columbia Gas, along with its vendor, Tennessee Pipeline, are seeking to significantly expand their capacity to deliver more gas to some yet-to-be-identified customers somewhere in the Commonwealth. Members of my group have been before this body a number of times, seeking your help in getting answers to a variety of questions that will explain the need for the increase in capacity, an activity that goes well beyond the required repair and replacement of old pipes. You have had the head of Columbia Gas, Steve Bryant, here to answer various questions drafted by our group and posed by the Select Board. He chose to not fully answer those questions and continues to delay, deny, and obfuscate. I need not remind you that in September of this year, the towns of Andover, North Andover, and Lawrence experienced a horrific tragedy when excessive pressure on natural gas lines owned by the gas company caused a series of explosions and fires in as many as 40 homes, with over 80 individual fires and one fatality. Im preliminary findings, the National Transportation Safety Board blamed the tragedy on the shoddy work and oversight of Columbia Gas. So what does a metering station do? It seems to allow for the step-down gas pressure from the interstate line to the local distribution system, and it measures a flow. It would connect the pipeline system with the Columbia Gas system. And the pigging capability allows utility pigs to seal the line, clean the pipeline of debris, and remove hazardous waste, which needs to be transported and dumped somewhere. How and where are still open questions. We're assuming that both Tennessee Gas and Columbia are doing this to increase their sales here in Pioneer Valley. To whom and why, we still don't know. And in light of North Hampton's decision to continue their moratorium on the additional gas products, the mystery deepens. Now our town seems to be handed a fait accompli. This metering and pigging stations are being built on land that is still zoned as residential. How can this town sit back and allow this to happen? I continue to hear from town administrators that there is nothing we can do to prevent a private landowner from selling its property to allow the construction and use of a small but potentially lethal industrial gas processing plant on residential land in a densely populated residential area. I have spent time imagining how our fire department and emergency medical teams would cope if we experienced an explosion similar to the one in the Merrimack Valley just two months ago. We couldn't handle it, even with assistance from the surrounding towns. So this becomes both a public health and public safety risk for us all. But there are some things I think we can do. I'm asking the Select Board to use its authority to hold a town-wide public forum, which allows the town to learn about these plans, which have been very quietly dealt with, and find out what the risks and benefits are to us. We still don't have the real answers to our questions as to why both the Pipeline and Columbia Gas need to increase the capacity to deliver more gas to geographic areas that are already fully established. We will provide, my group will provide experts to present information about the health and safety risks. You can ask the others to come. To date, Long Meadow has no bylaws that deal with hazardous material and waste or zoning with regard to the structure of hazardous material stations. We can create such bylaws, as other towns have done, to regulate the construction, use, inspection, testing, and penalties to meet any failures. And we can also regulate where places of such hazardous areas are being built, certainly not in a residential area. We need to do this immediately. The Select Board can go on record, like the town of North Hampton, to officially oppose this natural gas pipeline expansion. In light of this town's commitment to reduce its carbon and harmful gas footprint under both its own 2007 resolution and its commitment to being a green community, we need to actually stand up and be counted as doing more, even when it's not convenient. We've created an Energy and Sustainability Committee to oversee these matters as well, and that committee can help with all of the above actions. As a community, we deserve answers to questions about design, safety, inspection, use, health risks, impact on property values to those properties closest to the metering station, and why, all of a sudden, this is now a two-acre project needing four buildings and the pigging station. As an aside, I was here in town when we, as a town, were asked to allow the building and use of a funeral home on Dwight Road, an area that is zoned for business development and not immediately adjoining residence. This was discussed and voted down because of the concerns raised as to how the embalming and other fluids would be disposed. That type of business development pales in comparison to what we were being asked to accept without any discussion or debate. I respectfully request that this board respond to these three initiatives, perhaps your new business section tonight, if you have time, although it doesn't sound like you will. But in any event, maybe at your next meeting. We want time on the agenda for a full discussion of these three initiatives. Our town deserves us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else who has a public comment we'd like to add to public comments? Yes, please come forward. State your name and address.
My name is Shannon Collins, and I live at 817 Converse Street. And I'm actually present this evening as a parent and one of the many members of our community who feel our voices regarding the recent vote to not renew our school superintendent, Dr. O'Shea, aren't being heard by the majority of the school committee, in spite of our attempts to be heard by sending letters, making calls, sending emails, and being present to make comments during visitors' speak-out at our recent school committee meetings. It is evident that our voices are not being heard by the lack of response to the Long Meadow Education Association, who took a vote of no confidence in the school committee, and by their decision not to allow visitor speak-out at this Wednesday school committee meeting. I'm here this evening to continue to show my support for the teachers and administrators who work with our children every day, who stand behind Dr. O'Shea, who has worked with them and supported them in their work every day with our children. I'm here as a concerned taxpayer, who would like to know where the funding to finance a search for a new superintendent is coming from, and what will have to be sacrificed at the school level to fund such a search, instead of working with our current superintendent to address whatever identified areas there are for growth. I'm also here to communicate with the members of this board, to inform you that a petition is currently being circulated for all concerned citizens to sign in favor of amending our current town charter. Our current town charter does not currently have a mechanism to remove elected officials before their term expires. The petition in favor of amending our town charter is just the first step in a process that would include a special town meeting and the participation of many registered Long Meadow voters. We would welcome any guidance or feedback you have for us in the future regarding this process. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other citizens' comments? Any Select Board member comments? Thank you very much. Hearing none, we're going to just move forward with our agenda this evening. Our first agenda item is Alzheimer's Association Declaration for the town of Long Meadow. Like to come forward?
Hi, I am Judy Yaffe, 196 Bel Air Drive, Long Meadow. I'm here as a representative from a group of people who have developed a dementia-friendly Long Meadow, which we started the initiative last year. And I'm really coming to give you a certificate of recognition because thankfully you allowed us to come in and work on this project. JGS, Jewish Geriatric Life Care, Glen Meadow, Council on Aging, and obviously the Alzheimer's Association, we joined a partnership in order to be successful. Each month, we had two different workshops or programs, either at the library, at Glen Meadow, at the Jewish Geriatrics, and also at the Council on Aging. So in culmination of this, we are here to represent and giving you a certificate, and I'd like to read it to you. A dementia-friendly community is a geographic area where people with dementia are understood, respected, valued, supported, and confident that they can contribute to community life. Citizens and community workers in the town of Long Meadow have committed to continue to spread education and awareness on Alzheimer's disease and dementia in an effort to support those living with dementia and their care partners. And this is really important. Not only are we doing here in Long Meadow, but it's also a statewide initiative, and it's also a country initiative. A lot of communities are doing that. So I'm very proud to be a resident of Long Meadow and to be able to do this. And just so you know, this is not a one-year project. It will continue with other educational programs and training. So, Mark, I don't know what I do.
Thank you, Judy. Yeah, we're going to put that somewhere in Town Hall or in the Town Hall building?
Should we take a photo? Sure, we're going to take a picture.
Yes, presented.
Sure. Come on up here and we'll do this. You're going to have to walk around. Well, if you walk around the back, they'll see your stinkers up.
Did you want all of them?
Sure.
It's really to be friendly to all of them.
Do I have to stand by Marines?
It's not a long walk.
Thank you very much. Our next order of business is a town manager's report. Our town manager has walked out of the room for a second, so I'm just going to skip down for a second and look for approval of the November 19 meeting minutes from last.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments, questions, changes made by Mr. Foster, seconded by Mr. Lucius? All those in favor? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. Stephen, we're going to skip back now to the town manager's report, if you could.
Very briefly, Mark. I did put some detail in. We've gotten a lot of feedback, both positive and negative, about our new raised crosswalks that we installed as a part of our Complete Streets prioritization plan. Seems like a Cain and Abel kind of thing, where one of them is almost universally lauded, and the other one is not as much. We've had great feedback on the raised crosswalk on William Street, east of the Green, right in front of the Community House and First Church. And so I think people are really happy with that. It's a very busy crossing, both during school and really at all times. And it seems to be working very effectively. The one at Williams, at Grassy Gutter, is virtually the same design. In fact, I know it feels different to drive over, but the hump, if you will, itself, we sent the engineers back out to measure, and they're very close together. I think one of the things that is a little different is the road approaches are a little different. And so it feels different to drive over it, but I don't think it's any higher or sloped any differently than the one on Town Hall. There have been, there has been a lot of positive feedback about that one as well, but a lot of people are unhappy with it. You know, one of the issues in that location, where there was a fatal accident involving a vehicle and a pedestrian, is speed. And I think, you know, anecdotally, the Traffic Committee has spent a lot of time kind of going back and reviewing the project, the design, the markings. Some of us drive over it very frequently, and if you're going over it at, you know, at 25, it's not bad. If you're going over it at 35 or higher...
You're going over that one at 25?
Yeah.
You're going airborne.
Hold on. Let him finish. Let him finish.
Yeah. Let me finish before you tell me what I'm about to say is wrong.
I just want to make sure you've gone over.
So, no, we have, I mean, if you go, certainly, the reason why it's there is because inattentive drivers going too fast have been a persistent problem in that location. We did a Complete Streets prioritization plan a couple of years ago. It was ranked number one in terms of a priority based on data, not just because of one incident. And, you know, we applied for a grant from the state, and they gave us the money. So the state looked at the data and the need for it, and agreed with us, and said, you know, we're going to give you money to build it. I think, as my report indicates, there was an issue with how, between the time the asphalt cooled and the time it was marked, and that was a problem. And that was a mix-up, I think, on the contractor's end. And the other part of it is people, like subcontractors, like line painters, are backed up. And we talked about this, like paving. You know, we talked about Colony Hills and how they've had double the amount of rain they normally have in a given year. And so paving is backed up two months or whatever it is, and then line painting is backed up a commensurate amount as well. Nevertheless, here we are, and it is marked the way it's supposed to be. The crossing signals are working the way they're supposed to be, and we still have issues with it. So we, the Traffic Committee, has already ordered custom signage, bright green signage that says Raised, you know, Raised Crosswalk, Reduced Speed Ahead. And we are looking at a way to either attach to the poles or install next to them the flashing, we have pole-mounted flashing speed signs that if you're going over a certain speed, it'll be a flash of strobe that'll warn you. We're looking at putting those in. They're solar-powered. We were hoping to attach them to the existing solar panels on the poles, but we're trying to figure out how those can be best installed in that location. So we're going to keep working at it. And as I noted at the end of the report, Pioneer Valley Planning Commission is, actually, we just, I think, this afternoon, received kind of initial blush at the data that Pioneer Valley Planning Commission has collected, right around us, where we sit right now, Bliss Road and William Street, around the Big Y and the shops. And I expect that one of the recommendations they're going to make is, you know, better facilities for pedestrians. And I would anticipate that raised crosswalks will be a part of those recommendations, because it's, that really is a, in our Complete Streets prioritization plan, another highly-ranked area that needs to be addressed. And anecdotally, I think it was last summer, the police did pedestrian enforcement out there, and, I mean, more people didn't stop than did. And so it's really, we want, and I think we want to create a comfortable pedestrian environment in that location, so people will feel good about walking or biking up to the shops and not always have to take their car. So, you know, I acknowledge that the one on, the one out here at Grassy Gutter seems a little out of context, but I think as other efforts unfold, it'll be a little more, it'll make a little more sense as we develop that area. And the other thing is, on Friday afternoon, the Building Inspector and the Fire Chief and I had a couple of calls, one with the Department of Public Utilities and the other with the, God, it's a long title. I don't want to make sure you get it right. The Pipeline Hazardous Materials Safety Administration, PIMSA. In fact, it was, if you guys remember, that when they, when there was a bit of an issue with the markings on Wolf Swamp Road, there was a woman from PIMSA who came here and spoke with us. Do you guys remember that, a couple of years ago? So we called her as well. She's the kind of community liaison for this region, just trying to get a handle on what our local role is. The resident who spoke is correct that I, right now, it's really between Tennessee Gas and Long Meadow Country Club has been reported. And they're really, I have not seen a set of plans. And I'm fairly certain of a set of plans that details what it's going to look like, where it's going to go specifically on the site, and, you know, the pipe connections. I'm pretty sure that doesn't even exist, based on my discussions with Tennessee Gas. I think they're waiting for the vote before they spend money on the engineering. You know, we're just trying to get a handle on what level of local review is going to be expected of the municipality, both from a public safety standpoint, but also a, just regular, do they need a building permit? Do they need site plan and review? Those kinds of questions. And I just want to summarize the calls by saying, it's still not really all that clear. It's a pretty complicated thing, because there are so many regulatory bodies that are associated with this, and they all have very distinct roles that pick up on one side of a valve. And, I mean, it's complex. But I don't want the folks at home to think that we're not paying attention to it.
Thank you. Okay. Tom, and then Richard.
So when you say they haven't formalized all the plans, because they're waiting for a vote, a vote by whom?
By the Country Club.
Oh, by the Country Club?
Right.
Oh, I thought they said that had been made.
Yeah.
It's already taken place, though.
It took place, it took place last week. So basically, and this was, in some extent, this is me speculating, but I also, in my conversations with Tennessee Gas, like most people who are going to do a building project, they don't want to spend money on engineering until they know that they've got some level of site security, site access, you know, site control. And so they were waiting for the vote and the option, and I think now you'll see more development of plans.
Okay. Well, now, when we were looking at the possibility of, like, a gas pipeline that would basically have filled up trucks and brought propane or gas through town on Converse Street and then dumped it in East Long Meadow, you know, it was clear that the state said, you know, we can't not allow something like that to happen, that those roads have open access to trucks, and that we can't really regulate that as a town. When it comes to building structures like this, I mean, I imagine there's a lot of state regulations. And would they feel the same way about that?
It's different. It's different agencies that are dealing with it. And I think that the rolling pipeline issue is a good example of something that was really unprecedented here, and was going to be a game-changer in terms of, you know, traffic, truck traffic on our streets and rolling hazards, if you will, and emergency response planning issues. A facility like, is being discussed by Tennessee Gas, there's one of those in East Long Meadow. There's one, I think, in Munson. I mean, they're, they're pretty common. And so we have access to other municipalities who have direct experience with these, to kind of figure out what's the impact, and, you know, what do we need to know? How do we need to be prepared and get some guidance? But like I said, Chief Dearborn has really taken a leadership role in making, in reaching out to the DPU and PIMSA and trying to figure out what is the full, what is our role? Where do we have decision-making authority and everything else? And as we learn more, we'll certainly, you know, notify the board and any relevant regulatory boards and committees. But it's not, so the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, and I don't mean to go all bureaucratic, but just to give you a sense of how complex this is for us and why it's not an easy answer. The Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, FERC, regulates the company, and they regulate the stuff inside the pipelines. PIMSA, Pipeline Hazard Safety Trend, you know, they regulate the pipelines themselves and the markings of those and how they're built and everything else. And then the DPU would regulate Columbia Gas's distribution system on the other side of the metering station. And so it's, you know, figuring out who, where one responsibility and level of, you know, one set of regulations picks up where the other leaves off. And, you know, it was a lot of, well, it depends, and well, we can't, we can't give you legal advice. And, you know, there was a bit of, there was some runaround, but not because I think that they don't want to answer the questions. I think it's just, it is just a very complicated matter. But the point of this kind of long story is, we are paying attention to this. There are aspects of it that really are just private, are conversations between private entities, but we are really paying attention to what's happening, how it's unfolding, and when the town is going to have some, you know, if and some authority over it.
I thought that was a good answer. Thank you.
Tom, Marie, you have a question?
Yeah. There was two things that, I guess, surprised me. One is, we're now talking about a two-acre site with four buildings on it. That is a complex. It's not just a little metering station that we sometimes see with utilities. The other is, bylaws do matter. We can't, could have bylogged the transportation of hazardous goods through there. And my question is, where does zoning step in? Because if you're saying if I can privately negotiate, then maybe I'm going to negotiate with someone to open a, you know, a cell tower on top of my house or something like that. I think when you have certain zoning laws, there's only certain things you can put on there, or else you have to look for a change of zoning. So I'd be very interested to see if this is, could be zoned in that area. And I'm not asking for an immediate response to you. I'm saying it would be interesting to see where our zoning board feels. But is this a change of use for the Country Club? So that's something I just want to hear from later.
Stephen, I guess I go a little bit beyond, Marie. You know, clearly, we have an interested group of citizens, and I don't know whether they represent a majority, a minority, or, you know, any other group of people. But I think we owe it to them to give them a legitimate response as to what is our authority in this matter? What is the town's authority? And, you know, my first take, and Marie, you know, not knowing, but what I've been told, you know, is that the difference between you building a cell tower and this going on there is, it's a natural gas pipeline, therefore, federal regulations and state regulations supersede local zoning laws. But I don't know that to be a fact, but that's what I've been told. And I think it's important that we get told, for a fact, what we can and can't do. And, you know, I don't know who's qualified to put that information together for us. I don't know if it's our town council, or if we've got to go out and find a special council to give us that information. But I think I'd like to be I think I'd like to be educated as to what our authority is. And I think we owe it to the residents of the town to find out what we and they can do so we don't go out spending a lot of energy of ours and theirs and the towns on some things we may or may not be able to do, so.
Okay. Cause I think if you look at saying that it's federal authority, then there's nothing that can't say that I can't decide to sell to turn my property into that, which I don't think would be allowed because I'm right in the middle of an actual neighborhood. So, there must be some, uh, other things that, parameters around that. So, I'll be interested to hear what are the parameters, why they chose the country club rather than my neighborhood.
Cause the gas line runs through the country club.
Right.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, it could have been a house that's off of there. So, there must be more parameters they're looking for.
So, Richard, I mean, it's just proximate to pipeline. I mean, we, we have to start off on kind of a
Right.
base level set of facts and not, 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 it could go anywhere.
No, but I'm saying, I'm saying a residential home because the pipeline goes right across people's properties. They can tell you that.
But they needed two acres.
And they also already have an easement.
Right. So, I, I think, I think the thing is, I wanna go back to a previous point. It's very difficult to, um, assess, um, the plan and get specific answers to those questions without a set of plans, um, which we don't have.
Something was shown to Long Meadow, the country club.
I, I think fairly generic. Those aren't real plans. Those are kind of conceptual, maybe, at best. Um, and we are, like I said, we filed our notice to intervene, to get informed of things that has been, um, going well. We've been getting some notifications, some related, some quite frankly, unrelated. Um, but we are, like I said, I just, I, I agree with everything you have said. Um, what I wanted to report to you was that I'm already working on it, so, thank you. Um, and that when I have better answers, I will give them to the board.
Well, I, I'd just like to get an, an understanding from other members of select board if they concur with my request or, or not, which is to formally find out what our authority is and not from PMSA, not from FERC, not from the DPU, but from an independent, what I'd consider a legal authority. Now, if I'm the only one calling for this, let me know, but...
The town manager just said he was gonna provide though.
Hey, Mark, I, I know what you're saying. I'm telling you that we're trying to do that and we're trying to figure out who can even answer the questions, but we, until we have something to, like, specifically bounce off of people, that's, I know that's the, we haven't talked to town council yet, but I know that's the answer they're gonna give you.
Well...
No, I'm, I'm not, I guess I'm not looking specific because I, I'm not looking for the specific plan. You keep saying we need plans, we need plans. I wanna know statutorily what are, what we, what we, and just as importantly, the citizens of the town that are spending a lot of energy on this have the authority to do. If they're, pardon the expression, spitting into the wind, you know, we have the, I think, the, the obligation to tell them, folks, here's whose authority it is. And, you know, whatever you're doing, you may be doing politically, you may be doing it for public, you know, for, for public perception and, and public opinion for or against the pipeline, but legally, you know, you can't show up at a, at a ZBA meeting and tell the zoning board of what they can do when we find out, if we find out they can't do it. So, I'm, so I'm just looking, not, Stephen, based on any plans. It's just a, what's our authority relative to somebody moving into town and wanting to put in a, a, a generic, you know, step down station? Tom?
I guess, I'm wondering if something like this has ever happened before, you know, because we're looking at, you know, the gas companies. It's, it's commerce, you know? It involves the state, involves taxes, it talks revenue.
But it's, but it's also federal because it's interstate gas line. That Tennessee gas pipeline is an interstate as well as an intrastate pipeline.
But at some point, the state is gonna be telling us, you know, this is affecting this company in our state, Bay State Gas or whatever, you know, Columbia. And aren't they going to tell us?
I wouldn't bet, I wouldn't, I wouldn't bet the future of Long Meadow on it. You know, they're, the, I don't think the town's in it, the state's in it to look out for our best interests. And I don't know that, it's not our best interest to have this. I'm just saying that, that it seems to me, we need to, all, all I'm asking for is, what is our authority? What is our, what's the authority of our building department? What's the board, authority of our zoning board of appeals? What's the authority of our planning commission? You know, what's the authority of, of the select board? What's the authority of town meeting? You know, you know, if we were to propose bylaws of zoning with the, with the, you know, attorney general's office, tell us, they're, they're not authorized because these folks have a, you know, group home kind of, you know, status that, over zoning. I mean, I don't know any of that stuff and I'm not sure any of us do. And I think we need to just understand where we stand with, with respect to this because we're gonna spend a lot of energy on something and we need to understand whether the energy's well-spent or not well-spent. And I hate to tell people, go away, don't talk to us, if they can, but I also don't want somebody telling me, here, telling me, here's what the select board needs to do if we have absolutely no authority to do it.
So, let me just go back to where I started, Mark. Um, we asked those questions to the people we thought had the answers. They didn't have answers specifically for us. We're trying to figure out who does have those answers. We're, you know, we, I thought we were gonna get a lot more clarity than we, clarity than we did. We'll keep working at it. Um, but, uh, and my goal, my mission is going to be to get those answers for the select board. What the good folks who are committed to this issue wanna do with their time and energy is up to them.
Good. Fine. Very responsive. Marie?
I would say also ask the zoning board. There's a lot of people on that board who are, that really might even have had experience in that, so check with them too.
Trying to figure it out.
Okay. Thank you. Any other? Paul?
I would just say, after months of administrative work, um, trying to get our money into the state retirement benefits trust fund, the last obstacle being that 90-day waiting period. Um, today, we sent them 1.5 million dollars to start, have them professionally invest our funds. Um, we'll probably be sending them another $900,000 or so in the month of February. We have a CD that becomes due and it'll be tagged on with the FY19 appropriation that was made. So, anyway, we'll have 2, 2.4 million dollars invested professionally with them. And again, that will help our next OPEP study quite substantially also. So, that hurdle is now taken care of. Lastly, we did receive, the police department did receive a, a grant for that last camera. You may recall that the, uh, town meeting approved, I think, five cameras, I think that was the number, and they had one more that they wanted through grant money. That grant money was approved through MIA, so that's also came into the town notification last week.
Thank you.
Oh, I do have one more thing. Sorry, I should've done some announcements. There is a menorah lighting Thursday at four o'clock on the green in front of the community house.
Thank you. Richard?
Could I, could I go back and reopen, uh, comments?
Sure.
Okay. I, I do, it's one thing, you know, I, you, you brought a good part about the definition of where our responsibilities lie on the gas issue, which I totally agree with, Mark. But also, we had, you know, school committee members in here tonight or people representing the school committee. And I think it's, we've had a lot of correspondence. I think it's, we should state on camera that we have no statutory authority to interview, to intervene in any school, uh, committee activity. They have their own authority vested under the state laws and regulations. And I think people should understand, although it would seem reasonable that we might be able to do something, it, it is a total different legal organizational element that is dealing with the superintendent issue. And, and although we may have feelings and empathy or whatever, we have no authority whatsoever to intervene in any of the dealings with the school committee.
Thank you. I think it's a fair statement. I think people also ought, ought to hear that's, it's at least my understanding that changes to the terms and conditions of elected officials requires a charter commission can't be, can't be changed by a, a voted town meeting or a bylaw. And so, people who are, you know, proposing, uh, a town, special town meeting for changing the charter are, are gonna find themselves being told that their proposal is probably not, not valid by the attorney general's office. Now, I'm not in the attorney general's office and so they're welcome to do it and find out what the attorney general says, but that's been my understanding when we've asked about that, that terms and conditions of the appointment or election of town officials requires a charter commission, not a charter committee, not a bylaw. So, I don't know, Stephen, if that's not your...
No, it's, it's what I'm saying. I was just gonna, uh, to, Richard's right. Um, the school committee gets their authorities from state statute, not the charter or the select board.
Yeah. One addition to what you said, I think most of it was 100% accurate, except for the fact is, people are talking about a recall provision and that does not fall under the authority of a charter committee or charter commission. So, that could go through another procedural thing. It takes time, but it could, there could be an administrative procedure in place, except there'd have to be a lot of definition put onto what the recall. I understand some communities do have recall provisions, but it doesn't change the terms or anything, Mark. It's kind of funny. It, it changes it after the fact, but not upfront, so.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna kind of change gears here and talk about our, our DPW change order. And so, I, just to bring everybody up to speed, we've got a group of people here representing our project, our owner's project manager, our, you know, contractor, Mary Beth Bergeron, who's on our permanent building committee. I'm just gonna try to bring people up to date very quickly. And as the saying goes, when we last left you folks at home, what we did is, we had found that there was a considerable amount of asbestos-containing material buried underneath the parking lot at the site of the proposed new, or the, under construction, DPW facility. Excuse me. That, uh, that material has been, as we, I think the term is accumulated, we put it into, uh, at least one big pile, maybe a couple of other smaller, smaller piles with the, trying to develop the most cost-effective manner of handling that material so that project can, can continue. Uh, and what we're here to do is to, uh, hear from our project manager, owner's project manager, uh, to, uh, talk about those, those options and what they've come up with, with, what I will say is, after a considerable amount of and some very thorough work on their part, we're, and we've got at least three review, three proposals that were presented to us tonight, uh, to, to look at. So, I'm just gonna turn it over to, to you folks, Tim, if you wanna take over, introduce yourself and...
Give me a minute, Mark.
Okay.
Stephen? Just give me a second. Sorry. So, um, just before we get started, Tim, I, I just wanted to do just a brief background, if I may, Mark. Um, as Mark stated, um, we did encounter this problem that was not only unforeseen, but unforeseeable. And, um, with the assistance of Colliers, our owner's project manager, and Weston Sampson, um, the en, the engineer designers, um, as well as the help of the permanent building committee and the subcommittee for this project. Um, and, uh, in working with our general contractor, W.J. Monford, um, we explored every conceivable option to deal with this problem. Uh, and I think if there's one message I wanna make sure is clear before we get into the specifics of what's being proposed, it's that, um, there were kind of three overarching options. Send it all to Ohio, bring it to our local, our former landfill down off of, uh, Tina Lane, or keep it on-site. So, we certainly evaluated those three large issues. And then we looked at a bunch of hybrid issues, a combination there of all of them in between. And I've spent many, many hours and weeks. Um, I almost said drilling down into this problem, but that's a bad pun for, um, a bad turn of phrase for the situation. Um, I wanna commend all the people that I, all the people that just, um, listed for their time and attention and commitment to trying to figure this out. Um, it really has been a challenging problem. And I'm gonna answer the question before it gets asked, uh, in terms of some sort of cost recovery from the former property owner. Um, of course, we are gonna keep all of our options open in that regard too. Um, as the board knows, we've had those discussions. Um, nothing is closed to us at this point. And, um, we're gonna work with the DEP and, like I said, evaluate our options on that score as things unfold. But to keep the project moving, um, we are recommending, um, a change order to, um, bring all of the material to the landfill on Tina Lane, which would then, um, have, that would be the first phase. The second phase would then be a capping of that material at the landfill. Um, I did distribute to the board, um, later this afternoon, but information I got today about, uh, updated cost estimates. So, the ones that were in your packet are now out of date. We received updated cost estimates from the general contractor. Um, and I will let Tim and Mike go kind of through the details and their view of those estimates and, um, what they're recommending and why.
Thank you, Stephen. Um, so, as Stephen mentioned, we received a proposal from the contractor initially to, uh, bring this material to Ohio. Um, that cost was over $4 million. Um, just the trucking costs, um, the, you know, paying by the ton for the disposal and, uh, of that material. So, uh, we looked at, uh, a number of different options to, um, to have a more cost-effective solution. Um, bringing it to the local landfill, we weren't sure how long that might take and, um, what the various costs might be, um, but that sounded pretty promising. Um, we did receive some, um, costs for that. And again, we, um, originally got a cost of 1.895 from the contractor. Um, it was still more than really, we were hoping that we could get it down even lower by, uh, potentially encapsulating the material on-site. So, essentially burying it, uh, a certain depth below the, the new pavement in that area. Uh, you put a geotechnical fabric and a, and a layer and boundaries and, unfortunately, in that scenario, any time that you were to work in that area on utilities, whether it be electrical or stormwater piping or anything, you would have to then have, um, trained people go in to dig in through that material. Um, but that didn't come back as, um, as cost-effective as we were hoping. Um, it with a larger site where that material could have been, um, put off to the, to the, to the side and you put in your, your utilities and then bring that in at the end and, and raise the grade and, and finalize it, um, it may have been more cost-effective. On a relatively small site, it's, you're kind of hopscotching around and kind of moving it multiple times to try and get the logistics right of getting everything underground. So, the cost to keep it on-site was 1.819. So, it was almost the same cost as bringing it to the landfill. Um, we've since gone back to the contractor and asked him to relook at his numbers for, uh, winter conditions and various other items. Um, and we got a proposal to bring it to the landfill.
Local landfill?
The local landfill, um, at 1.766. So, i, when you're talking these numbers, it's, it's, it's a neck and neck. It's, it's which one is, makes the most sense for the town? Um, do you leave it on-site in, uh, on the, at the DPW site where potentially you have to, to deal with this again? Or do you bring it to your local landfill and yes, there's additional cost to cap the landfill, but, um, is that, um, is that the, the better long-term position for the town? Um, so, we recommended, um, that it go to the, to the local landfill. We wanted to make sure that we had funds within the, the budget to, to cover this. Um, when the bids were received for the project, there was bid savings. It came in under budget. Um, thankfully, that money can be used to, to cover the costs of, of this change order. Um, certainly with what we've spent to date to remove the relatively, relatively small amount that, uh, we initially found, um, is eaten into our contingency. So, we will have a, um, a smaller contingency than we originally anticipated for the project. Um, but I think that we can still, um, fund this change order with the, the funds that we have on the project.
Richard, you had a question?
Yeah, I wanted to get one point. You mentioned about capping landfill. We're gonna have to cap that landfill either way.
Correct.
That, that's just, it's not an option. It must be done. We do, we've had a lot of grace period, I guess, from DEP on capping it, but that's, that's in our immediate future to cap the landfill. And there's no doubt about it, taking that material and putting it in one spot where it will forever stay undisturbed is so far superior than trying to bury it on-site to where every time we stick a shovel in the ground, we're gonna be right back into asbestos-laden soils. Uh, you can see the labor relation problems and the out-years and, and just the operational problems. And, and we don't even know what the future regulations are. I mean, we could make a decision today and five years from now, we say, oh my lord, why did we do this? You know, we don't- You know, we don't know what 15 years is gonna do in asbestos regulations. But we know now that we can safely do it and we have the blessings from DEP. And so it makes total sense. I, I even made a comment at the building committee, I didn't even care if it cost $500,000 more to do it. It was worth it for the future of our town. We, we do not need to leave that material on-site. It needs to get a permit, home, cap it, and forget about it.
Thanks, Marie. Marie?
Okay. I know you probably, what is the issue about it being down near conservation land or the floodplain? Do we need to worry about that or look at talking to conservation? Or because it's gonna be capped later? I mean, that's my only concern about moving it down there.
There's a, I can answer that. There's a permitting process that DEP signs off on. Part of it does have to go to the Conservation Commission, but they've been apprised of it. As Richard noted, these materials are used for capping in the landfill, are used for capping landfills. In other places, that's what they're gonna be used for in Ohio. And then they'll be covered with a state-of-the-art cap. DEP has been working with us all the way along on this, that they have no issue with it. And I don't, and in terms of the Conservation Commission, there's just certain distances from wetlands you have to maintain. Actually, the only area down there that's not in the floodplain is the landfill because it's already above the, the level. The elevation, that's the floodplain elevation.
Is the landfill, we're talking about the stump dump?
No.
It's not?
It's the former solid, they call it MSW, municipal solid waste track.
It's across, it's south of and a couple hundred yards west of the stump dump.
Okay.
So the rail crossing, where we were a few weeks, a month or so ago, the stump dump was right next to us.
Right.
We were on the east side of the tracks. You go over the west side of the tracks, it's basically on the same side, right, all in there.
And it's not gonna affect all that stuff there, the Fannie Stebbin stuff they're doing? And it's not gonna affect the parking lot they're talking about putting down there?
Yeah, it's not really...
It's all different. Okay, thanks.
Tom?
So you mentioned, you know, doing it in our own property, Tina Lane, you know, 1.7 and change. And then your local landfill would be 1.8. And where would that local landfill be, be as, where is that actually, if we went to that other option?
You mean the Ohio?
Option number two. No, you said option number one was 4 million.
That's Ohio.
That's Ohio.
And then option number two was a local one, 1.8.
Right, that's what I just described.
Where's that?
Down off of Tina Lane.
But then you said another one...
But the third option was leaving it on-site.
On-site. So there, okay. I don't know, I, I got two figures for Tina Lane.
Well, there was, there was one that originally was 1.895.
Yeah.
And we've gone back to the contractor and just saying, look, we need to get this as cost-effective as possible. We were able to get about 10% out of it, about $130,000 reduced.
At one point, we were waiting for the DEP to okay this, right?
No, we stopped, we were working towards a permit. And we wanted to get cost estimating. We wanted to further evaluate the on-site option, which would be governed by what's called an activities and use limitation, an AOL. So we stopped. Ty and Bond is the engineer who manages our, the engineering firm who manages our landfills, have for many years, do reporting requirements, things like that. They had prepared some documentation to apply for the permit, had kind of run that up the flagpole at DEP. We put a stop on that while we continued to evaluate other options. If the board approves this strategy going forward, then tomorrow morning, they're gonna be right back at it. And I would expect we'd get a permit very quickly.
The other thing is, when can this work?
I wasn't really... So, so what I was hoping was there was another location that it could be taken to another landfill other than Tina Lane and perhaps other than the on-site. I guess I would just have to say, I, I've spent over 40 years of my life on rivers. And, you know, rafting, canoeing, you name it, I've done it. And I know the power of a river. And if we have a big flood, I can't imagine any encapsulation is gonna keep this stuff from going down the Connecticut River into the Atlantic Ocean. So I have to vote against a Tina Lane proposal. I just don't see how that's even viable for us. I would feel irresponsible as a person who cares about the environment to, to put it at that, at that location. I think we can underestimate rivers and people have done it for thousands of years. You know, there's places in West Virginia, there they, where they've had things float down and wipe out whole towns. And I can't imagine that this is gonna stay buried there if we have a 100-year flood. I'd like to think, you know, I know that keeping it on-site is a nuisance and I agree with Richard. Not our best option, but I guess I'd say maybe we should look for another option that's about, way above the high watermark, not just barely above the high watermark, in my opinion.
Thank you. Bill?
The other question I had was, we're getting into the middle of winter. When we're gonna be able to do this? I mean, it's slowing the whole process down.
Yeah, one of the issues with leaving it on-site is compaction and getting, you know, you can't have, you can't put on top of soil that's already frozen and frosted. So putting, bringing it to the landfill, we could do that quickly and that's not an issue. It would, it would be a quicker process to bring it to the landfill than it would be to try and work with it on-site.
So how, how long do you think this is gonna take to get a permit?
The permit time, the turning around the permit is gonna be quick. Because like I said, we've spent a lot of time cultivating DEP's understanding of this, of this option. So the permit will be quick and where they say 57 days or something like that for the...
Yeah, between 37 and 57.
So, month and a half, you know.
Is that to get the permit or to do the work?
No, to do all the work.
It's about half, half the time of leaving it on-site and moving that material all, all around.
Yeah.
So some prep work at, at the landfill, some tree clearing and repair of the access road, and that's included in that price.
So I'm gonna revisit a discussion we started last week at the building committee and for the select board. I was at the building committee when this was presented and discussed. And I guess one of my concerns then was, and because I haven't seen it yet, although the, what I saw today appears to have a map on it, but is to know that the price we're paying takes care of all the material that we have identified so far. And we're not doing this by number of trucks or by, you know, I'm repeating myself for you folks, but the folks at home, my concern is that we agreed to a, a quantity instead of a defined material that we say, all that stuff in the pile. The size of the piles have been estimated and I think they've been estimated pretty well. But I don't want to find out that we've agreed to 218 trucks or 375 trucks, whatever it is, and find out that just to get rid of the pile and the things we've identified takes 10% more trucks and we're gonna come up with a, with, with an additional bill. Because that's what happened the first time around for our abatement. And yet what I'm seeing here is still, you know, based on, on number of units as opposed to a defined material and area. And so I was wondering how you can address that.
One of the portions, which is from the subcontractor that's doing the, the earthwork portion, they described as stripping the remaining asbestos soils on-site that have not already been stockpiled. So approximately 6,000 cubic, 6,000 yards. And then there was a sketch that's provided that shows that that area is within the area that was the previous parking lot and then just beyond where it's been identified, up the slope on the southeast corner of the site. And then the access road where the pavement has not been removed, where there's a, there's a gate there now. So that, that, we're anticipating that there would be some material underneath that pavement because that pavement hasn't been removed yet. That's the only pavement that's still there. And then the stockpile itself that's been, the material that has been stockpiled. So in talking and expressing those concerns back to the contractor that, look, we want to make sure that we're all on the same page here, that we're not, you know, having some discussions later, we made that clear to them and then they provided that additional sketch on here and have that language about, obviously, if, if we were to find something unforeseen or unknown, then, you know, no one can anticipate that. So this is for the scope of, of work that's been identified, the asbestos that's within the, basically, within everything that we know that's on that site. Anything that we're gonna be disturbing, there's not an area that we're not gonna be, or that we, there's not an area that we're gonna be working in that hasn't been investigated, I guess.
Now, so we have quite a bit of contaminated material. Any idea where it all came from? I mean, was that originally part of a tennis facility or was that taken there?
We suspect that's where it came from. There was, the tennis, I don't know if it was 12 courts it originally had or 14 courts it usually had, but there were a number of them that were, okay. So there was a number of them that, that the court service had been removed. And you recall that we originally found some mounds around the perimeter, right in the tree line, that had the green asphalt with some green tennis court surface material on it.
Yeah.
And that was originally removed. And that's, we thought they had removed most of this material off-site. And that was just kind of some leftover remnants that was kind of pushed to the side. It wasn't until the site contractor ground the asphalt in the existing parking lot. And after that process, the rain, you know, was a day or two later, then there, there had heavy rains, which took the, the silt and the dust off of the material and all these little green specks were popping up. So then we understood that we perceived that they probably used the old tennis court material as the base material for the parking lot area. So basically, they ground up the parking, the tennis court area, the tennis court material, laid it down, compacted it, and then paved over the top of it.
Tom, the internet said to tell you that the high abrasion resistance of tennis courts in the 70s was asbestos-containing material to give the abrasion resistance to the top layer of tennis courts. So it was probably a coating put on top of all the tennis courts.
I mean, not probably. The billing had, the billing had three sections. Two sections still had tennis courts where we had done core samples and found that the underlayment was in fact asbestos-containing material. The abatement of that material was a part of the base bit. When we acquired the building, the third, the front third where there was a fire some years ago had a dirt floor. And not seeing piles of asphalt chunks of green, like big piles, because it was a significant amount of area, we assumed that it had all been hauled off-site. Even when we found the, the chunks of material kind of hidden, you know, in the underbrush on sides, we thought, oh, they must have just dumped the last bits that they didn't get out or something like that, because you just couldn't see it. And it wasn't until the, the series of events that occurred that Tim just described that we realized that they must have milled it up, used it as base and paved over it, which was why it was really unforeseeable. Because we did some testing out there, even in the parking areas, and didn't hit any of this because it was scattered. You know, you could do a bunch of samples and just keep missing the spot. So it was one of those things where, I mean, you know, it was what it was. I mean, I think it was, I'm pretty sure it wasn't supposed to happen that way, even back in 2001 when that occurred. In fact, if you, yeah, if you look at the Mass GIS aerial photos, there's a photo from 2000, 2001 where they're actually doing the work.
Yeah.
You can see it. So...
Can I, can I just ask another question if I could, Tim? Can you just walk me through, and I, I think, Steve, we've got a, an updated bid that you sent out today dated November 30th. Can you just walk me through so I understand how we read this, this bid proposal? It's got, you know, subcontractors totaling a certain amount of money, then it's got a map, but then it's got a, another price to it and then still yet a third and a fourth price to those, so.
So if, if you're looking at the cover page, that, so the, the top portion is, lists the subcontractors and their different activities. So Salt Marsh is the site contractor that's been trained to operate their equipment and, and deal with this type of material. Below that is Compass, and that's the abatement contractor. So that's the people who are licensed to, to handle this material and oversee the, the process. Then there's this, you see the negotiated where they took out $110,000 off their price. So there's a subtotal for subcontractor material, or for subtractor costs, 1.6 million. Then W.J. Monford is the general contractor. So because of this process, as this process is going on, they're gonna have a different, additional staff on-site to kind of just monitor this activity while they're doing, trying to do other things. So there's some additional time for Monford there. So then there's the, the breakdown of, of materials and labor. There's the, what do you call it, the... Well, there's the, the, the labor, the burden, the markup they put on it. And then below that, you have the subtotal, the 1.612, which they mark, then they mark that up. So you have the 5% markup on the subcontractors before the overhead and profit. The total adding in Monford's, Monford's work, that's 16,790. The markup on, on, on their work, so bond cost, additional bond cost, and you come up with that 1.766.
Thank you. Thank you. And Stephen, I apologize if you've said this. Sorry, because I was out of the room for a second. But this, this still maintains this building's cost within the authorized level, authorized by town?
So a couple of things about the finances. We still have a request into the state for the funds to do this. We've been trying to get an answer desperately on that. We're still working at that. But because of the favorable bids we received for the project, we can accommodate this change order and not have to go back to the town for additional funds. In fact, and still retain a little contingency to, for the duration of the project, which I think we know we're gonna need. We're just at the front end. So, I mean, we still want to push for the request from the state. But the spreadsheet that I just handed out along with, I also handed out Tim's analysis of the contingency. Some of that, there's some interplay between the numbers, so they can't be looked at independently. But the bottom line for the purposes of this discussion is on the spreadsheet that was prepared by Paul. And like I said, basically, the $2 million we saved on the bid price for the cost of the building can cover this.
Thank you. It's important to hear that. Does anybody else have any other questions? At that point, therefore, I'd rec, I'd accept a, a motion to approve, I think we're calling this change order a proposal ten. The motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
I think we wanted to build in, I mean, there's a change order here, but we need to build in a little bit of, and we, I can come back for it, but some of the funding, you know, tens of thousands of dollars, you know, for tying bonds time to work on this. That's not in the change order. I mean, it's gonna be a pretty small amount of money. I can get a better estimate of that, but we just want to kind of build into flexibility.
Why wouldn't you come back though, when you got a firm price?
Okay, but they're gonna be working.
Oh, we'll take it out of your salary.
Sure. Maybe, maybe add, maybe add plus 30,000 to cover the engineering costs.
Personally, I'd rather bid on, vote on what we know for actual expenditures instead of estimates. I mean, if they can wait two weeks, we can do that at the next meeting. The other thing is, Stephen, we're gonna have, have to have a discussion about closing our landfill and the cost of closing our landfill. If we should not have state money to do that, how are we gonna pay for that?
I mean, that's a conversation that we'll need to have, but probably not for another year. I mean, where that's gonna get, where we're gonna be up against that.
Well, we're gonna have to have that discussion. So, anyway, all right. So I'm gonna, the motion's been made and seconded. I'm gonna take the motion as it, as it stands. So hearing no other comments, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor and any opposed? The vote is four to one and Mr. Lucusa voted against it. Thank, thank you very much.
There is one other item. There is the stockpiling of the material that was on-site that was authorized by this group. And when the contractor tallied up his number... And when the contractor tallied up his numbers, he ran over. So that was the stockpiling work that was done, that's, that material is now stockpiled. They've only been paid to date what was authorized by this group. I would recommend that that overage, you consider authorizing that and being able to pay that to them at this time.
To give a little background on that, when the board discussed the change order, up to a certain amount, the goal was to create a path, a clean pathway, so the demolition of the building could be completed. They encountered more material than was estimated, largely around drainage structures and things like that, where it went down, you know, six or eight feet. And the contractor proceeded with removing the material and stockpiling it, so they can continue with the demolition. So I agree with Tim's recommendation. I, I, I know the planning, the permanent building committee, and I share some frustration with the fact that, you know, the contractor was not prompt with notifying us about where they were at and when they were going over, but I know all the material was done in the furtherance of this, of the goal of opening an area up so they could demo the building, which was what was discussed at the original board meeting.
Right.
Is that on here?
Uh, Tim? No.
Is that in the 70, is that in this number?
This thing where it shows what our leftover contingency is?
Yeah, it's in there.
So that's in, with, in the...
Pending cost?
Pending cost. Stockpile repair tickets, and then the, the overage. And I want to say that overage was in the neighborhood of $70,000. 76,708.
So it was not 110?
110 is for tickets to repair the tarp. They have to go back when it gets windy and it blows off, so that's pending, it hasn't been approved, but there's 76,000 that's included in that number.
Okay. And then the rest, you're not sure?
Can we just start over for, because I'm, I'm losing this, too. So, change order number one, which was a, a stockpile, what we thought at the time was a limited amount of asbestos-containing material. We were asked for and approved based on a, it was a, originally, we, we did this based on what we thought was time and materials, right? Up to a certain amount of money. And that up-to-limit was...
167.
Excuse me?
167.
167.
166 and change, yeah.
$167,000. So that was done and then some by the contractor, and they, instead of 167, let's just call this 77. So they spent 130 or 144,000, is that, or 244,000?
245,417.
So they exceeded their, the authorized amount by approximately $76,700.
Correct.
That's, and so we're being asked to now go back and authorize an additional $76,000 for essentially work that was already done in excess of the prior authorization. So I guess my question, and you're not, you're not, probably not qualified to answer this, so I'll tell you, I'll, I'll ask it as a rhetorical question. We just voted to approve $1,778,000. When they come back and say, well, but we really spent 2.3 million dollars, we want the extra money, because it needed to be done. What's my answer? And because, and, and before you answer that, because the answer is, the analogy is, in my mind, dead-on. It's a kind of an unknown, you know, we're giving them a limit, they went over the limit, they didn't ask us permission to go over the limit, and if it happens again, you know, the old story, fool me once, you know, then fool me twice. And so, we're not going to get fooled the second time, but I'm not really happy with being fooled the first time. So what are we doing? But more importantly, you know, what, what's Manford doing to improve their, their financial controls based on the amount of money we've authorized?
Yeah, no, I can't, I can't speak for them, and for their lack of controls to get timely tickets from their, their subcontractors. We will say that, at the time that we authorized the time and materials, so they were doing a certain amount of activity, and paid for how much time it took them and what they were doing. They didn't do a limited amount of work that was agreed upon, and it just took longer, they did more work. So that work, if it hadn't been done previously, it would have to be done now. So it's not that you're not, you're not losing anything, you're, you're, it's a benefit to the town, this work that was done. It was just done improperly, because they, they did it at the wrong time. They did it when they didn't have authorization, as opposed to having it included in this 1.8 million dollar change. So I feel that it is, I would recommend that, that they be compensated for that.
Richard?
I, I have equal frustration. I think I've already brought him up with the group. There was a failure. There's no doubt about it. We are by contract, we have, Tim is representative, but we have a clerk of the works position that should be there on a daily basis, taking tickets. And there was a failure that took place. There was a lot of materials moved that we knew nothing about, until the contractor had already moved it. And I don't think that's what we're paying for, but that's what we received. I agree with Tim. The end result is it's going to have to be moved anyway. That's true. But it seemed there was a procedural problem on the contract, which I, I think we need to, we need to solve that going forward. Either that, or we don't need a clerk of the works position, because that's what the position's there for, the daily supervision. Tim's not on the job every day, but there should be a representative there to say, nothing else, taking tickets and monitoring the job, saying, you got a change order for $50,000, hey, you just hit your limit. Stop. And it could stop. It's not emergency work. There's no reason in the world that work didn't stop when they hit that limit, and they come back to Tim. Tim comes into the board, we get emergency action, and continue work. And I, I recommend we're going to have to pay it, Mark. That's not the problem, but I think we need, I think we all need a clear understanding that we don't want to hear this again.
Well, yeah, and by doing this as a, this is their lump sum for the scope of work that they're proposing. They're proposing to remove, again, it's what we know about, it's what we know is onsite. There's no guarantee that, no guarantees, but for, it's not a, an open-ended, this is, they're saying that, look, what we've, and we've taken a lot of time to investigate the site at this point, what we know about is going to be removed for this dollar value that's, that's proposed.
But, but Tim, even the contractor should have been cognizant of what they're doing.
I agree. I don't want to defend them and make it appear that I am, because obviously, they made the mistake. I mean, we had a hygienist onsite every day, monitoring who was there, what they were doing.
And we were paying for the services to make sure this didn't happen. That's what irritates me. At least in my idea of what each position within the corporation is about.
It puts us in all the very bad positions.
More discussion needed. I mean, it's already happened, but it shouldn't happen, and it shouldn't happen again.
I just want, and I, I agree. And I, I think I started off by saying I shared the frustration, and Tim's and Mike have heard about it from me, too. I just want, I, I think context is important here, because I don't want to convey that, I don't want the impression to be left that somehow, and, and you said it, you didn't say that we were duped in some way, you did acknowledge that it had to be done. I think at the ti, the context at the time, so I'm not going to defend Monford either, but the one thing that we share with them is a desire to get this done as fast as possible. And I think what happened was, they were trying to be aggressive to keep the project moving, to get into demolition, because at the time this was all happening, we thought we were going to figure this asbestos thing out before demolition was complete. I think had we known then what we know now about our timeline, we would have put a full stop on when they hit the limit that was approved and taken stock of where we were. But at the time, we thought we're within a couple of weeks of getting an answer to this asbestos thing. We, and I think Monford thought that it was going to happen fairly quickly, and they wanted to keep things going, to keep the project moving. So, again, it's not a defense of Monford, nor is it a defense of Colliers or the hygienist. It's more just, this is why this, I believe the situation happened, I think most people acting in good faith. That's the thing I want to convey. I don't think it, we may have a change order come up down the line, where we think we're, we're getting, you know, worked over by the contractor. I don't think this is the case here.
I, I, just, Marie, I'd just like to comment, I, I guess the difference here, and I've expressed my opinions, but it's, it's public funds. You know, we're, and, and, and the perception is, you know, people are taking advantage of the fact that it's public funds, that we have no choice, we have to do the job, everybody knows we have to do the job. Yes, it would have been, need to be done anyway, but, you know, the, the overall was $76,708. It could have just as easily been 176,000, or 276,000, and we've still been sitting here. I mean, I don't know how we can condone sloppy accounting, or if not sloppy operations like this. And, and, you know, I don't get the chance to talk to Monford, because that's why we hired you folks at Collier, and so we, we get to take it out on you, unfortunately, that it was, it was a sloppy operation. I mean, your, your title i, is owner's project manager. You're representing the owner, the town of Long Meadow, at this project, and you were, you represented us poorly in this case.
Well, I would take exception.
Because somebody represented us poorly in this case.
I would take exception to that. I mean, I don't condone it either. You know, and I'm the messenger bringing bad news of a contractor that made a mistake. I'm not responsible for their work. I oversee their work, and I represent you, and I think I'm doing that in a, in a very business-like way. I'm bringing, I've been trying to bring you the best value for the town's payers' tax dollars, and trying to make this the, the best solution to a very poor situation that we set, we found ourselves in. And so I'm coming to you asking that you authorize payment to this firm. It doesn't mean that I'm condoning what happened, doesn't mean that I agree with what happened, but the bottom line is, this is where we are, and we've been through this back and forth in, in other meetings as well. I, you know, we, we treat the contractor as firm but fair, is the way we always, kind of our mantra is, so look, there's a contract, we're supposed to work to it, but at the same time, you have to be fair about things, and you have to work, have a working relationship for the life of the project in order to have this successful project, and I think we've been doing that. So as sticky as this situation is, I don't want to convey that I'm representing the contractor in any way. I'm just bringing you this financial information. You can choose to compensate them for that work that they did in error, or not, but I recommend that you do compensate them, because you have a long way to go on this project.
Can I just add one thing, too? I just, I want to make sure it's, it's clear. We, we've been close to this project, and it wasn't like this went on for a week without anybody knowing. This was, we knew we were coming up against the budget at some point, and we called a meeting with the contractor, we met him onsite, we said, we need you to, we, we feel we're close. We need you to get your finances, we need to know where we are in this process. And, you know, he, he did a couple more days of work, is really what happened, so.
And they said, yeah, we're close. We said, all right, well, how close? Let's have a meeting onsite. We went onsite, they said, okay, we've hit it. And we said, okay, stop.
So I, I just didn't want you to think that this went on for an extended period of time.
But wasn't close about 50% overrun?
That's what they said.
I mean, that's, that's not close.
I, I agree. I agree.
You know, I used, I used to work federal contracts, and I issued a daily report on what took place, and all this stuff was in a daily report, there was a legal requirement. And I would anticipate we'd see the same requirement on a state contract. Maybe I'm wrong. Maybe Massachusetts doesn't do it. But the feds, I mean, there was a daily report that talked about how many loads of dirt was taken up, and all the contractual things, and that's why I was, I shared with you guys before, I was shocked, I said, how did this happen?
Marie?
I just want to clarify something I think you said earlier in the meeting, and that was in regards to this moving to the other site. We're not paying per unit for that. That is job complete, right? So there's no way we could see the, the creep up in the prices. Okay. Thank you.
I have one more question. So we know how many tennis courts were in there, and we could figure out how thick this material is. Do we have an estimate of exactly how much that material was there at one point, and how much we've stockpiled?
Well, one of the problems is, is it was mixed with clean material, probably during the placement of that material under the, the existing parking lot.
To expand it.
Yeah, and then also, the, the, you know, the cuts and fills on a site of a construction site, whether you're bringing in material, or you have surplus material, because we were, we're going to be bringing in material, and didn't want to pay to bring in additional material, the contractor was planning on milling the existing parking lot and using that material onsite. In that process, you think of rototilling your garden, you're, you're mixing it up, you're grinding it up, and, and so in that process, what was underneath that asphalt got even, mixed up even more with the asphalt layer that was on top of it. So you have a very limited probably amount of asbestos in a very large pile.
You could likely estimate 10 times the volume has increased, at least, maybe even 50 times the volume.
There was some discussion early, Tom, of, gee, maybe you could sift it out, but it turns out you can't.
We even evaluated that option. DEP did testing for us that they didn't have to do to evaluate whether or not that's something that that could be done. So I mean, when I say we tried every option...
Maybe half inch thick?
On the tennis court itself? It was probably an eighth of an inch, or...
It's just a minuscule model. When that milling machine mixed it, it just went astronomical. I mean, if they'd have known in advance, it could have stripped it some way at the beginning, it would have been different, but they didn't know to the milling machine, it stopped its work.
Not until after the rains afterwards.
So as far as trying to estimate how much we have collected and how much might still be out there, it's really, it's just be a wild guess?
No, well, I think, I think we have a pretty good guess at this point. We've GPS the piles, the, the extent, gone into the wood line, looking for this telltale sign of this green court surface, even in the smallest particles. You know, and we did find it up, up the hill a little bit. Contractor found it between the parking lot and the old building. So that originally wasn't anticipated, that you'd find it even in there, but it was, it's kind of...
Tom?
So this afternoon, I sent out a diagram where they believe all the remaining material is. And I said they believe, it's based on sampling, GPS, like, it's not just, it's not like a finger in the wind, you know, whereas it, they've been doing a lot of work, so when you charge back up, you can check out the diagram and show us it.
So we can...
Do you want a motion?
Go right ahead, Marie.
A motion to accept the, your change order? Do you need the amount?
I guess.
Let's present the 76,000, 77,000.
708, 76,708.
76,708.
Second.
Be approved.
Second.
Are there any further discussions? Okay, call for a vote, all those in favor? Any opposed? The vote is four to one. Mr. Gold voted against it. Thank you. Thank you. Anything else, Tim?
Uh, no.
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you both for your work. I know it's been a lot of work. Hopefully, we can move forward and start getting EPW buildings showing up.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Tim, you got anything else?
Back here first. Okay, thank you.
Stuff out of the way early.
Next, next order of business is to act on the Council on Aging bylaws. For those of you who, just as, as a reminder, our, our last, maybe it was...
Mark, can I ask you to postpone that and take care of the audit? There's still a number of people in the audience who want to address the audit, and...
Sure. Thanks, Paul, we're glad to do that. Okay. We're going to skip ahead to our, our 2018 audit action. So our audit committee, our auditors would like to come forward, we'll... Thanks, Paul.
Take a motion we accept.
Mr. Welker, if you could introduce your, our guest and yourself?
Yes.
Yeah, we can get started.
Do you have my full bio there?
Yes. This is, I'm Ernest Welker, I'm chair of the audit committee this year, and we have with us Tara Tanya Campbell, who is partner in the law firm of Lansing Heath, and had been head of the team that has worked on our audit. So I, I have, you have... So, I, I have, you have before you, and I want to move this along, and I, so I won't read it, the, but I have in here some, uh, some comments that are all favorable about the various parties that have been involved, certainly Paul also, uh, but I won't take the time to do that. Uh, so, I'll, I'll just read that, "By unanimous vote of the audit committee members present at a meeting on November thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen, and after reviewing the town's financial statements and related documents provided by independent audit firm Melonson Heath, the ace, the audit committee recommends acceptance of the fiscal year two thousand and eighteen audited debt financial reports as presented." So, you may want to do that after you hear, or you may not want to do that, but, uh, that's the key of it, and, uh, we have four audit members this year for fiscal year nine people, and then Katie Patrakas, Matthew Shone over there, and Ernest Welker. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Tanya, and she will fly through this material.
Page by page, through the CAFRA, right?
And I might just get up and let Paul come over, because he might, uh, want to say something, although all of us will probably say very little, so we can move on.
Nice to see you all again. Um, last year, I kind of, you know, gave a, a brief overview of what an audit does and does not do, and talked about some of the key components of your financial statements. Given the time that it is, and that all of you were here for that last year, I was going to do the abbreviated, uh, presentation this year, if that's okay with all of you?
Yes.
Um, I do just want to remind you, though, that an audit does not provide a hundred percent assurance that every single transaction or balance is looked at during the audit, um, just want people to be aware of that. Um, and I was going to start by looking at your financial statements first, and then we can talk about the management letter. I do want to, you know, look very briefly at your, um, what is it, about a hundred-page comprehensive annual financial report. Um, before we do that, I do want to acknowledge the fact that the town did receive their certificate of achievement in financial reporting last year, the, the CAFRA that was submitted was certified, um, so it's another, you know, plaque to go on Paul's wall, um, that he proudly displays, but, um, I do, you know, want to acknowledge that it is quite, uh, quite an achievement, it really is. It's a, it's a very big document, and, and, you know, a lot of effort goes into that, so I do want to recognize that, and recognize the town for that. Um, we're going to look at page twenty-nine, you guys have the, um, financial statements available. Um, now, just a reminder, your financial statements are presented under the rules that are established by the Government Accounting Standards Board, or GASB. Um, in two thousand and eighteen, we issued the town an unqualified opinion on the financial statements, meaning that based on the results of our audit, we felt that the town was in compliance with generally accepted accounting principles. Um, page twenty-nine is the town's statement of net position. This is one of the, uh, what are known as the government-wide financial statements, so, um, what, um, they're a little bit different than what the town is used to looking at when you receive reports from, um, the town general ledger, from Paul's office. Um, the government-wide financial statements essentially take the different funds of the town, so your general fund, your special revenue, your grant funds, capital project funds, and consolidate them, um, into two columns, the governmental activities column, and then the business type, which are your enterprise funds. Um, these statements do a good job in terms of showing the true assets and liabilities of the town. On this set of statements, you'll see the capital assets, as well as your bonds payable and your other long-term liabilities. About three-quarters of the way down the page, under your, um, non-current liabilities, you'll see the town's net OPEB liability. The writing is really small, I apologize, but there's a lot of lines on this page.
They jumped out of forty-one point eight million, though.
Yeah, forty-one point eight million in governmental activities per, and then a total of forty-two point four million dollars. Um, last year, the number that was reported in your financial statements was about sixteen point eight million dollars. The difference between two thousand and seventeen and two thousand and eighteen was, um, a new accounting standard, which was required to be implemented in two thousand and eighteen, known as GASB seventy-five. Um, this new standard required the town to record the entire, uh, net OPEB liability in the financial statements. Prior to two thousand and eighteen, the town, um, did have to obtain an actuarial evaluation of, for your OPEB, your other post-employment benefits, or your retiree health insurance costs, um, but the town was allowed to determine what the liability was, and then amortize it over a period of thirty years, and book it a little bit each year. So, which is why the liability was only sixteen point eight million dollars at the end of two thousand and seventeen. The total liability didn't really change, but the amount that was reported in, or recorded in the town's financial statements, um, was just that, was just a portion of the total liability, and this year, it is the full liability. So, just something I want to point out, um, that, you know, there's no requirement to fund the liability at this time, um, although the town has set up, uh, an OPEB trust fund, as, you know, Paul was talking about earlier. At the end of two thousand and eighteen, there was a balance of about one point nine million dollars in that trust fund, um, and that is incorporated into the net OPEB liability that's booked in the financial statements. So, your actuary determines what the total OPEB liability is, nets out the, um, balance in your trust fund, and that's what gives you your net OPEB liability. So, the liability there, forty-two and a half million, is shown net of, um, the balance in your trust fund. Does anyone have any questions on that?
Marie?
I guess, my question is, compared to other towns, I mean, how do you, are there, is a formula you look at, like I'm looking at our total assets as a hundred and thirty million, our non-currents one twenty-seven, total liabilities one forty, I mean, when do we, when do you start saying, "We're really getting more"? Or is it just so out of whack for everybody?
It is really just so out of whack for everybody, um, especially this year, after booking the, the total OPEB liability, it's just, you're, it's not uncommon to see your liability so much bigger than, than your assets. Um, you know, over time, that number should go down, um, as the town continues to put money into the OPEB trust fund, your investments are, you know, going to be a little more aggressive in terms of the return on, that you're going to be seeing, um, now that they're in the state system, um, and not in certificates of deposit, stuff like that. So, those kind of things should, um, decrease that liability. The other big liability on there is your net pension liability, um, which I know has been a, you know, big topic of discussion the past couple of years. Theoretically, that liability should also go down, um, as you have a funding schedule for that. Um, but there's so many factors that affect that liability on a yearly basis, in terms of, um, you know, how the system does compared to what the actuary thinks they're going to do in terms of investments, and, um, things along that line, how, how they do according to the assumptions that the actuary, um, uses in the, in determining the liability, what percentage the town is of the total system, that can kind of fluctuate on a yearly basis too, which can, um, even a small change in that could change your, your total liability there. But, um, but it's not uncommon, it's really, it's going to be a, um, the same picture for most cities and towns across the state, okay, so...
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, that's all I was going to look at on that page, unless anyone had any other, any other questions, um, on any of the other numbers there. So, if we flip two pages to page thirty-one, that is your governmental funds balance sheet, and this is one of your, what's known as your fund-based financial statements, so it's a little bit more in line to what, um, you're used to seeing, and, you know, more in line with what the numbers that Paul would pull out of the accounting, um, accounting system. Um, you have your, the first column there is the general fund of the town, and, as well as the stabilization fund, which is required to be reported, um, with the general fund, um, in the financial statements. Then you have your, um, two of your major, what are known as major funds, so they're, they qualify to be reported separately in the financial statements, um, primarily due to the size of the assets and liabilities that are shown, uh, shown in those funds. Um, next comes your solid waste fund, which I know we discussed briefly last year, it is an enterprise fund of the town, but for financial reporting purposes, because it receives over seventy-five percent of its support from general fund, a general fund subsidy each year, it doesn't qualify as an enterpr- enterprise fund for financial presentation purposes. So, it's shown here, as opposed to with your, um, water and sewer funds on, uh, the pages that are a little bit further back. Um, something to keep in mind, too, in FY nineteen, um, you adopted the Stormwater Enterprise Fund, which will probably fall into the same situation, my understanding is, it does, it didn't, um, fully fund its operations in two thousand and nineteen, so it will likely, likely be shown in the same fashion as the solid waste fund. Um, just a couple of key numbers I want to look at on this page, in your general fund column, um, towards the bottom, under your fund balances, there's unassigned of about five point three million dollars. That, um, balance is made up of a couple things. One point eight million of, of that amount is your general fund, unassigned fund balance number, so any balance in your general fund that hasn't been reserved for a future purpose. Um, it's essentially like the starting point for the town's free cash calculation is, um, what you can think of it as. That balance represents about three percent of the town's annual budget, which compared to, um, from like a, what's the word, I'm trying to think of them, drawing a blank here, um, a benchmark, I guess, it's a little bit on the lower side. Um, you know, ideally, it would be somewhere up above five percent of your annual budget, um, so, uh, something to keep in mind there, I guess. The rest of the balance is of about three point five million dollars, is the town's general stabilization fund, which, um, is about six percent of the town's annual budget. So, again, that's, that's a, you know, fairly healthy balance, as with any reserve, the higher, the better, obviously, but, um, but that, uh, the town does have, you know, uh, money in the capital stabilization fund as well, excuse me, of a couple hundred, almost a couple hundred thousand at the end of two thousand and eighteen. So, that, that was it for the financial statements, unless anyone had any, any questions? No, okay. Okay, and next, I think we were going to talk about the management letter? Did you want to talk about that?
I, I didn't know if you would just go over the, uh, the findings, and then afterwards, um, they do have my audit correction report, which I normally supply, they have my recommendations, uh, as far as, as the, uh, people responsible, and the timeframe of how those will be corrected. Um, we'll bring your attention to the very first one that they bring up, it's probably something more in your hands, and the school committee's hands, um, dealing with an IT oversight board, but I'll let Tanya go through the findings first.
Okay. Um, okay, so, in terms of looking at the management letter, the first comment has to do with, um, reviewing the town's IT controls. Um, we had a new questionnaire that we had given to the town this year, and as a result, we had some recommendations, areas that could be improved. I know IT is kind of a, a big, um, very, uh, public, I mean, uh, area that needs to be addressed, and, um, in a lot of towns, um, you know, one of our recommendations was to develop a formal committee that could be responsible for the IT oversight of the town, um, including, you know, determining the budget, as well as plans and priorities, and what, um, potential, potential risks and threats there are to, um, the town's IT structure. Um, currently, there's, there are backups being performed, but there's no, um, kind of written procedures and policies in place for where those backups should be stored, and how often they should, um, how long they're supposed to be retained, things along that line. So, we just recommend that some kind of formal process be put in place, so everyone's aware of, of, um, where the backups are stored, and how often they're done, just, God forbid, something happened and, and backup actually need to be used. And we also recommend that there's, um, formal, formal criteria to put in place for password requirements, such as, you know, I love how we have to, you know, change them every, oh, what is it, six, it feels like every other day, now I think I just had that reminder come up on my computer, but, um, you know, that is important in terms of, um, safety to, uh, to town records, and things along that line, how often passwords are supposed to be changed, and what kind of special characters and everything like that needs to be, needs to be used. Um, and lastly, there's no formal process in place to kind of test and, um, train after new software's installed, or upgrades are done. You know, that, that doesn't happen as often, but it's still something that should, um, be addressed, and, and procedures kind of put in place to, to deal with that, so...
I, I don't know if you want me to go through the responses I had, I mean, you kind of...
Yeah, Paul, why don't you, I mean, Tanya, just so you know, we, we do have an IT committee on, on the books.
Oh, the books.
They, they just haven't met since the day they were formed.
Right.
And, and, maybe they met once in the, in the four years of, whatever it is since they formed, so your comments are, are meaningful, so I appreciate it.
I mean, with regard to the, uh, the second and third finding, Nick George, the IT director, has, has given me a response, it's not on there, because the response came in after I had submitted this, but he is going to be, um, doing exactly what, what was requested of him, he will codify the, uh, the written backup retention schedule for us, um, and then doing some other work with regarding with passwords, um, you know, the number of characters, if they have to be capitalized, uh, characters versus new numbers versus, versus letters, so there will be a formal, um, document prepared, uh, his target date for that was by the end of January, that he would have that, um, in place for us. The last, um, finding, uh, with regard to review testing and training, is probably more of a group effort be, between department heads and IT. The department heads are the ones who are really the users, um, when it comes to certain software, as an example, the Munis Financial Software, um, as much as, as the IT department is aware of what we use, they're not really involved with the intricacies of, of those softwares, so it, it kind of has to be a marriage between IT and, and the different departments, whether additional training is needed, whether the software is not performing the way that it should, um, anything dealing with that. As far as even the acceptance, if it is a new software, um, there has to be some type of, uh, kind of a joint effort in that regard, um, so it's, we don't really have a response to that as of yet, because, as you notice, it is left blank, but again, what I would say, though, like I said, it has to be a joint effort between the different departments who are utilizing the special software and the IT department. If it was a generic software, uh, where it came into something like Excel, or, or the Word, I mean, certainly IT would be involved from day one. There are some trainings that are available that IT would be willing to do in those cases, but any, anything that is specific to a department, they're kind of, um, they're not experts in those types of things, so...
Okay, thanks, Paul.
I just had an idea. What about a, it's like the safety committee, a assistant town manager IT task force? Because you seem to be, really have your hand on a lot of the software changes, and things like that are happening.
It sounds like a good idea.
But, Marie, why don't you get the IT committee to do what we've chartered them to do from day one?
But I don't think this was part of their original charter.
Yeah, theirs, theirs was more of expansion, and a five-to-ten-year plan, this seems like more, uh, operational, on making sure that those processes and procedures are in place and followed. We still need an IT program.
I just think it was every, because if you recall, it also included a budget review and approval, that they're supposed to do, I mean, all, it, it was pretty comprehensive, and...
I mean, the groundwork is there, it's just that it hasn't really technically been followed to the way that it was presented.
Technically, it hasn't at all, Paul, so, I mean, you're right.
Then you can blame the audit.
Rather than create another, that's fine, I, I'm glad to blame.
I just don't know it.
Rather than create another group, let's get the group... Rather than create another group, let's get the group to...
Yeah, but that group was more residents and just a few of the departmental people, and it just sounds like this is an operational issue.
I, I think, I think there's two, the IT committee was, was meant to be an oversight to help IT with, you know, all the different aspects that go on on a daily basis, you know, keeping up with technology and those types of things, so that was the number one probably point that was made. The other one is probably more of the operational when it comes to the software, things to that nature, so it's kind of an overlap kind of between the two. There's some that was really outside of town personnel and some inside personnel.
Can I speak from here?
No, because nobody can hear you, Ernie, get, get thee to a microphone.
Send him Paul's seat.
Yeah, it's nice. Get thee to a microphone, Ernie. Or yell very, very loudly.
Join the crowd.
This is a lot of time spent for, not much to say, but it is, it is, the audit committee for years has been wanting to look into the IT stuff here. As, as everybody knows, there's been all kinds of problems with the information and getting out and all that sort of thing. Of course, as always, it's partly a monetary matter, right, you have to find the funds to get these things done, but at the same time, nobody should be fooled that it's not important to get these things done. And the, the audit committee, as I say, has, I would, we had, we had a member about six years ago on the committee, he got a, he got a bump up in his job and left us, but he, he had, he had expertise in this area, and my eye lit up and, you know, I thought we were going to get some, some good guidance, and he left, but it's, it's, all of these things that our audit committee brings up are pains in the neck to the people who have to do things around here, but it's not good to have them left to their own devices, so and that, and that's one of these things. Thank you.
Thank you. You can stay there. Okay, yeah, Paul, do you have anything else from the, the audit correction?
No, not, not a number one, I mean, I think we can, if you want to go through the remaining part of the management letter, I think it'll go quicker, though, that was probably the most controversial.
Okay, so comment number two came about as a result of our review of the recreation department. So every year, we pick, we work with the manager, we pick a department that handles cash receipts, and we sit down with them and kind of walk through, okay, so from the time the cash receipts come into the door to the time you turn them over to the treasurer, you know, what's the process, who has access to the funds, you know, how are things recorded in your software, how do they track things along that line? And as a result, we had a couple recommendations. The first is when the checks are received at the department, they're not stamped immediately, they're put in a drawer and, you know, in safe keeping until the turnover to the treasurer is made, but they really should just be stamped right away, you know, for deposit only, town of Long Meadow Recreation Department. Less likely chance of misappropriation if, if it's stamped immediately. Most of the receipts collected in the recreation department are for fees related to the programs that they run, but there are a couple instances where there's miscellaneous type receipts, passport renewals, I believe, some rental space checks, things along that line that are miscellaneous, that don't get tracked in the actual recreation department's software. And those are, those are kept in a secure drawer until the funds are turned over, but we just recommend that a formal log be maintained, so when the receipts actually come in across the counter, that they're, they're logged, and then when you go to actually prepare the turnover to the treasurer, you can compare the two to make sure you have all the receipts that you collected at the time you, they came in. I'm, I'm sure Barry's already implemented that recommendation. Lastly, you know, there's, there's an inherent control in place when you, you're taking registrations for a class or a program, if the student's not on the list and they've paid, then, you know, a, a red flag would be raised. But when the student is, or not even student, but the, the child is registered for the program, there's, you know, the, the person entering them into the system enters in how much money was received for that program. And adjustments can be made and discounts can be given and things along that line. You know, Barry reviews those, the adjustment reports periodically, a couple times a year, and we just recommend that she review it on a monthly basis, just for reasonless, just to make sure there's nothing that looks unusual or suspicious.
And I would just say, Barry has responded, she's agreeable to all the recommendations that the, that the independent auditors have made. A portion of that will be tested through internal audit. One of the things we do are the cash turnovers audit periodically, along with the petty cash audit, and we will look for those so-called miscellaneous receipts to make sure that those logs are, are maintained at the way they should be, as most of, most, if not all the other departments have them already.
Paul, your next update of this audit correction, or is it going to be March?
Probably, yeah, sometime right after the budget or something.
We expect to see comments by then.
Right, exactly.
Always, okay.
Yep.
In regards to that, the same situation occurs down at the recycle center, too. They receive checks.
It did last year.
Do they stamp them right away?
They do now.
Everything you're recommending is going to follow.
That, that was a finding in last year's management letter, and that has been rectified.
So they're doing the same things that Parks and Rec is now being recommended to do?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Comment number three relates to the Student Activity Fund audits that are required to be performed, according to the Massachusetts Department of Education. They issued guidelines a few years ago requiring how, the frequency of the audits and what procedures were supposed to be performed during those audits, depending on how much activity the Student Activity Fund had. So if it had over twenty-five thousand dollars of activity expenses essentially during the fiscal year, then it needed to be audited externally every three years, and then the years in between, it could be audited internally, but the audits had to be done in accordance with the DESI guidelines. If it had under twenty-five thousand dollars of activity, it needed to be audited every three years, either internally or externally. So depending on how much activity the Student Activity Fund had, determined how often it needed to be audited, but every single audit, whether it was done internally or externally, needed to be done in accordance with the guidelines. Yeah.
Well, go ahead.
Can you tell me what that number is again?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five thousand, so if it's twenty-five thousand...
Of, of annual expenses, basically, essentially.
Annual expenses.
Yes. So the high school and the middle school have over twenty-five thousand dollars of annual expenses related to their student activity funds, your elementary schools don't, so...
Okay, is that receipts or expenses?
Um, we look at it in the expense side of things, because that's how much money's going out the door.
Oh, I see, but it would be receipt, so twenty-five thousand needs annual...
Expense.
Annual audits, are you saying?
Oh, sorry.
Every three, if, if, if they meet the twenty-five thousand dollars in every three years...
Every three years.
They are to have an independent audit done.
Of the, of the actuary.
Of the town. Now, the last time they did that, I believe, was for FY fifteen, Tom Scanlon Jr. did it. He is scheduled to come in and perform for FY eighteen, the audits of the two middle schools and the high school for FY eighteen, because again, they, they are above that threshold.
Okay.
Now, the, 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 the other audits, the independent reviews, let's say, that happened in those off-years, those were not being done. I personally did one for the high school for FY two thousand and seventeen, but I will tell you right up front, it was not done with the DESI regulations or anything like that. Those just, it would have took, taken me months to kind of get myself up to date on those and learn those and go through the process, and that just, it just didn't have the time to do it. So I did my own review of their cash, their cash balances, some of the procedures, internal controls that they had in place, and I had written up recommendations for corrections that, that they needed to address, which, which they have.
And the twenty-five thousand dollar limit, is that's a GASB rule?
That's a DESI.
That's a DESI.
DESI, yeah, they set the threshold on that.
Threshold, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, is that, is that it?
That's pretty much it for that.
Okay.
For that comment, yep. I'll skip comment number four, it's just kind of an FYI, there's a couple new GASBs that are coming up and down the road, and we wanted to make the town aware of those. We don't need to go into detail about them now, but we just want to make sure that, that Paul is prepped to make those changes that will need to be in place in a couple of years. So, not, nothing earth-shattering, no, nothing as big as GASB seventy-five, but just FYI, that's an FYI recommendation. Comment number five is a couple, you know, smaller issues we wanted to mention. It was brought to our attention that there's some instances where departments are involved in fundraising activities, and we just wanted to make the town aware that, you know, certain rules and guidelines that prohibiting the use of, municipal resources is the term, but from staff participating in fundraising activities while they are actually working for the town and being paid for, paid for by the town. So we just recommend the town formalize policies and procedures related to that, make departments aware of that. You know, we certainly don't want to discourage fundraising and, you know, charitable contributions, but there are certain rules and regulations that must, that, yeah, D.R.R. has issued related to those.
So if, if some charitable organization connected with the town wanted to use a space, could we just rent that space to them? I mean, like if we said, okay, you, you need to use this, this room, you know, we'll rent it to you for so much per month or...
The, the Parks Department has a set of regulations on how they make judgments, whether there is going to be a cost associated with their rental or if it's going to be for free, depending on what organization it is. Certainly, if it's a different department within the town, there's no charge for, like use of the community house, as an example. However, if it is an organization, certainly for a, for a profit group, their policies would say there is going to be a certain charge for the community house. If it was, if it might have been a nonprofit, and I'm not quite sure exactly what their policy is, but they have something that's going to address a nonprofit also in their, in their pricing structure.
Well, most charitable organizations are going to be nonprofit.
Again, but they're not necessarily related to the town of Long Meadow. You know, they could be the March of Dimes, you know, something that, it could be a church group, so their, their policies stipulate, depending on the organization or the type of organization, what the cost will be as opposed to a profit versus nonprofit versus governmental, versus town department.
Okay, but if, if there was a fundraising component, if we charged rent for that, that would, we wouldn't be, you know, breaking any rules in terms of audit.
No, because they're probably doing their own fundraising themselves as a separate entity. I think we're talking about, we're talking about the different departments within the town of Long Meadow doing fundraising. Whether it's, I mean, whether it's, you know, the, the veterans might be doing fundraising for, have a Memorial Day celebration, I shouldn't say celebration, Memorial Day type of ceremony, or, you know, a certain department might be willing to, to, you know, do something so they can raise money to buy a new piece of equipment. I mean, those are the types of things that we want to bring under the control of, and formalization of a policy, so that we make sure that everybody's following the same practices and not doing anything that's kind of out of bounds.
Yeah, no, this sounds good, yeah.
Great.
Do you know which Mass General Law? And also, what is the anti-Aide Amendment?
Yeah, actually, I have a couple of copies, but I didn't bring them over.
I have it over here.
Paul, you have?
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Are there any other comments, Tanya, that you want to bring to our attention?
Um, no, I don't think so. The comment number six really is more of a general ledger treatment kind of thing that...
And that's been taken care of.
All, you know, addressed in nineteen, so...
Right, it was, it was in the seventeen management letter, we said we would address it in FY nineteen, it has been addressed and taken care of. And the last one is the solid waste enterprise, probably something that I will bring to your attention during the budget process, you know, the, kind of the pros and cons of how we're handling it. You know, it doesn't qualify from a generally accepted accounting principle standpoint, necessarily that it's a, an enterprise fund, however, the statutes allow it to be an enterprise fund. Statutes don't require that, or statutes allow subsidies from the general fund, so we just have to make a decision how we want to characterize it. It's not a big deal one way or another.
Mr. Welker, are you looking to make some addition to?
He's taking a walk.
Oh, okay.
The, I know, and I, I'm sure you're aware, too, that there have been some, some people that have wanted to merge the audit committee with the finance committee, and I, I, we don't think that's a good, good, good thing to do, but this, this corrective action report was a creation of the audit committee. Before that, nobody was in particular looking at them and following it through. Paul jumped on it along with us and built that table to, to keep tabs on all these things, so it's, you know, it's just one of another of the audit committee's contributions to good work here.
Thank you for that political, paid political announcement, Marie.
I just have one last question, rolling back to the financial report, you mentioned that we're at three percent in the unrestricted fund balance, and we really should be higher up. I know that really relates to what people have said in the past. And then I was trying to read your, on page twenty-six, where it says, "Use of free cash as a funding source for non-recurring expenses," when it was going down the, the various general fund. Do we need to be putting more of that free cash into the unrestricted fund? Is that what you're recommending, or you're just saying?
Um, uh, you don't really put free cash in your unrestricted fund, you would just not use, use every single dollar of free cash you have.
And then it would just automatically roll over, is that it?
And then would carry over, yeah. So, I mean, a couple other things that, on the, the next page, you, oh, you're looking at twenty-six, sorry, yeah, I flipped to the wrong page, mine aren't numbered like yours are. So if you look at the, the general fund operation results, the total of the negative three twelve, your state and local revenues over budget were about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which was, is really tight considering your, your total revenue budget there, and also your budgetary appropriations unspent by departments of about three hundred thousand dollars, that's also really tight, less than one percent, I think. So just being aware of that, that's how you generate new free cash every year, so if you use all your free cash in one year and your, your revenue and expense budgets are that tight, you're just not going to generate a lot of new free cash every year. You know, you can't, you know, some years you can't budget, budget as conservatively as you'd like to in your revenue budgets, but just something to be aware of.
So, Tanya, I'd just, I'd just like to point out that there's some people on this board, like myself, who think that, say, that any free cash means you've overtaxed your, your residents and we should work toward less free cash, and I understand that's different from what you just expressed, but there are different opinions.
Well, I think there's a balance. I think seven hundred and ninety thousand is what you ended up with at the end of eighteen. That, that's really kind of tight in my eyes, in terms of...
Ah, it's killing me.
I know, I know, I know. You know, it shouldn't be six million, maybe, but it should, you know, you have one bad year and you have no free cash, and then, then you're, you know, kind of stuck, so... Yeah, it's a fine line, I get it, I get it.
I have one other question, this came up at a meeting prior, and I wonder if this fell under your purview.
Okay.
In terms of switching money from one account to another, we just set up a new policy where there'd be a person in charge of the account, and then the assistant, and, and then, and then Paul, that there'd be three people who would be notified when accounts were transferred, when money was transferred.
The wire transfers out of the treasurers.
Wire transfers, okay, I wasn't sure what type of transfer.
Yeah, I mean, is that something that you would suggest, I mean, there are other town... I mean, is that something that you would suggest, I mean, do other towns do that sort of thing, instead of giving just one person? I know they're saying, well, it's easier to just have one person, but I thought.
It would be easier to have one person, but yeah, it certainly is out of control, that's not a bad idea. You know, typically, there's one to two people in the treasurer's office that have access to make transfers, and you kind of need a little bit of flexibility there if someone's out for vacation, like someone else should be able to make transfers, especially to fund payroll and stuff along that line. But someone outside of the, outside of that office, like Paul, being aware of that, it's, that's certainly an out of control that, and what.
Like I said, we, there are still going to be two people who have transfer capabilities.
Right.
But when the bank gets a request, they then send an email notification about the transfer being requested. So, on that list, there's four of us.
Okay.
Meaning the two that have authorization, the treasurer, the assistant treasurer, and then it's myself and the town accountant. So, we're aware of what, what they're doing simultaneously.
So, you don't have to approve it, you're just being, okay.
We're just being told that they are making this transfer of funds, basically.
Okay, yeah, no, it's not a bad idea. I've never seen that kind of thing before, but it couldn't hurt, that's for sure.
Yeah, well, I guess, but you have heard of people transferring funds and then disappearing. So, this would reduce the chances of that, which is why we, I'm glad Paul was cooperating with that request.
I just want to mention too, with regard to the select board's policies and leaving unspent free cash, we just did a policy within the last year that any available free cash, when we go into the annual town meeting, that we actually transfer that into stabilization fund. So, technically, we are leaving no free cash on the table to begin next year's balance, it's just put in the stabilization fund. We'll still have access to it, but it, like I said, it's just going to come up in a different form.
Are there any other?
I guess, one other thing that I just, in the, and it probably isn't an accounting, an auditing issue, but in our, in the large report, there was a, a section that discusses the town, and so, I just, one of the things that concerned me is that it's like, in the first section on page, I think it's like page four, it says, "Long Meadow is considered the premier town in western Massachusetts."
You don't believe that's true?
I take exception to that, I just think it's, we should be, we should be proud of our town, we have a beautiful town, attracts a lot of professionals in the area, but I don't think we should be arrogant and say, "We're the premier town." I just think we should change the wording on that, because, you know, what we are is we're a beautiful town that a lot of professionals in western Mass are attracted to because of our schools and our tree-lined streets and everything, but I don't believe we can say we're the premier town.
Would you put that in the form of a motion for the board to change that, or, otherwise, I'm going to leave it the way it is.
Oh, well, then I guess I would make that a motion to change that paragraph.
I don't even see where it is, Tom.
How about saying, "One of the premier towns," instead of not be premier completely?
The first section, it's like the, where it says, "The Finance Department has a letter of transmissional, or trans, transmittal," and then it's like page.
Interjectory section?
Four, or if you want, let me just see.
Profile of the town?
I'm still getting used to this.
It's just above, it's above, a couple paragraphs above governance, profile of the town, maybe the third paragraph.
Why don't you say, "One of the premier towns"?
If I was better with this Apple computer, I could tell you exactly what page it is. I think it's page.
Well, we won the award last year with that wording, same wording in there.
There you go.
I missed it last year.
Oh, I see it.
I was, I was reading the numbers more this time, I was looking more at the words. Yeah, page eight of the document.
Yeah, I see it.
I like it.
I like it, I'm leaving it.
Being the premier leaders of the premier town.
Long Meadow Select Board takes vote. We are average.
We are no longer average, well, we are.
Ah, the headlines are just going to write themselves, this is great.
All right, all right, all right.
The most attractive town for young professionals, not the premier town.
I don't know that we need to micromanage this, but Tom, if you want to do it, make the motion and see if, if anybody else will vote for it, I guess, I don't know.
Yes, I'd like a motion to change that paragraph from "Considered the premier town" to something like, "We are one of the most beautiful towns in western Mass that attracts professionals to, you know, to live here with their families."
Is there a second to this motion?
Be totally political animal here and say, "I'm not second here."
There's no, there's nobody seconding it, Tom, sorry. We're going to leave it the way it is, I guess, okay? I, I just, Tanya, I have one, one other comment, if I, if I could, and it's a question I've asked you every year.
Yep.
And that, you know it's coming, is that, have you had a chance to talk to the Audit Committee without our management present?
I did.
Okay, thank you. And, and I guess, Bernie, I should be asking you, and you can answer from there, did anything substantial come up during that discussion?
No.
Thank you, all right. So, go, Marie.
One last micromanaging, you forgot the Energy and Sustainability Committee. I know we're new, but you want to add that?
It's conserving paper.
Right now, we have a draft of the management letter, and so, what I'd like to do is, thank you for going through this, I assume that, and there may be adjustments to the CAFER as well with that, and so, I presume we will get the final management letter in, with all due haste, I guess, right, you're wrapping up your?
Yes, the management letter can come anytime, we're waiting on just a couple of numbers to plug into the CAFER and some updated pictures.
Right, and then we need to have that into the GFOA for consideration of passing their test by the end of this calendar month, so.
Yep.
Everything will be wrapped up probably before the holidays, quite honestly.
And unlike many of our other things, this is coming to us whether we like it or not, so I don't think we need to even authorize it or approve it or anything, just say thank you and appreciate you coming in and getting the audit done and identifying areas where we can always improve, which we know that has to be the case.
I thought you guys were going to vote to accept the findings, but.
I think we do.
I think I need to accept the audit, though.
You should accept.
I place a motion and we accept findings of the audit as presented.
Okay. Motion's made and seconded, is there any other comments? All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously, thank you, thanks very much, Tanya, thank you, Ethan, thank you to the Audit Committee for all, all your work and oversight. We'll see you, we'll see you in a couple of months to follow up on this stuff. Okay, we're going to go back to our Council on Aging bylaws, and this was back at the last meeting where we approved the Council on Aging bylaw revisions, but there was a Section 10 on standing committees, and the more we talked about it, the more we were concerned about it, so we sent Mr. Festerzak off to deal with the issue of standing committees for the Council on Aging, and he has a recommendation, and so, Paul, if you want to just go through that recommendation.
Yeah, I met with Jim Layden, the director over at the Council on Aging regarding that bylaw. I did not meet with the full board of the Council on Aging folks, but anyway, Jim and I both came up to the conclusion that not probably necessary that there be permanent committees of the Council on Aging, but there will have the ability to create committees, there's certainly some calls called task force or ad hoc committees, those could be created more so if there is this piece of special legislation or a special issue that needs to be, you know, some other type of review, that they have the full authority to create those kind of temporary subcommittees of the board, and that was kind of the recommendation that we had, that that would be replacing our Section 10 there regarding committees. The wording is in the information I had sent to you, it said that the Board of Directors may establish committees as deemed appropriate by vote of the directors to study issues and present their findings and recommendations to the full Board of Directors on an as-needed basis.
Okay, so that's the recommendation, is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Is there a second? Motion's been made by Mr. Foster and seconded by Mr. Lowe, are there any comments about the proposal to insert a Section 10 on the Council on Aging bylaws, the statement that they will form committees on an as-needed basis? Hearing no comments, all those in favor, please signify. Vote is, passes unanimously, Paul, thanks very much.
So, are the bylaws were approved last time?
We approved them all except for Section 10, this is now Section 10, the bylaws have been approved, so, Stephen, will you notify Jim and the COA that they now have an approved set of bylaws to operate off of, and I guess.
Yeah, I can tweak them and get all that in there.
Great. So, the, the next item on the agenda is the Adult Center Gift Policy. The Adult Center Gift Policy was also discussed at our last meeting, we tended to come up with a, I think, a grouping that said we liked, as a group, the ability to recommend naming opportunities for specific applications, and yet, there were some, also called general gift restrictions and general guidelines that were in an alternate proposal that we were asked to put together. So, what you see in your, in your handout in the document is the summary of the two, and so, Marie.
Actually, I'm going to ask, the reason I'm going to ask for this to be moved is that you told me to put it together, and then I thought Stephen was putting it together. I had to leave town on a family issue, and I really had, did not put this together, and I think that we need to spend a little more time before this comes in front of the Select Board and really hash it out, or else we could be here for a while. And I apologize, I did not spend the time on this that I needed to. So, I'm asking for it to go to the next meeting.
Yeah, does anybody else have any concerns with that? I mean, the, the issue is, we can't fundraise until we have it, I presume, right?
And I apologize for that.
Defer this then to the next meeting, if that's what everybody wants to do, okay? Thank you, we've got, that's it for old business, we're going to try to move through our new business fairly quickly with the audit out of, out of place, but the first thing is annual liquor license renewals, and so, we have in front of us a list of liquor licenses that come up for renewal every year, these for the calendar year 2019 liquor license renewals. And I think in the past, we've done this in two or three groups, the groups being package stores and restaurants, and then I think there may have been another group, but if anybody would like to make a motion for liquor license renewals, or we can do it one by one? Is there any?
I'll make a motion that we renew all liquor store licenses, they're all current with taxes, nobody's violated or anything.
Well, we do have one conflict. Well, one person hasn't paid on the taxes.
No, that's been done.
That's been done, oh, great.
But, so there's a motion, is there a second to renew liquor licenses, so, motion's made by Mr. Lowe and seconded by Marie. The one question I had is that the bottle shop had not submitted a tips form, or what they submitted was pretty, it just said, "Trust us, we're tip certified," as opposed to. They didn't use those words, but essentially they did, without any tips forms, and I think we've, in the, in the past, required that. I don't know if that means anything to anybody, but I'd like to make the renewal of the bottle shop's license contingent upon them submitting the actual tips form that we request of, of every other liquor store in, in the community.
Well, that's good, do we need to make that as an amendment?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm, I'll make amendment to the motion that, that the bottle shop's renewal is contingent upon their submitting a formal tips certification form to the town, I guess, puts Debbie's title here, the liquor, liquor administrator, liquor license administrator.
Is that actually a policy or the law?
It's just our policy, and we've done it for everybody, so, that's all.
I second your amendment.
Marie seconds the amendment, so let's just vote on the amendment first. All those in favor of the amendment? So, the amendment passes 5-0, so now, the amended motion is to renew the liquor license for all the liquor stores, and I'm just going to list them because I want to make sure we get them all, the liquor stores are Four Seasons, Wine and Liquors, Long Meadow Package Store, and the Bottle Shop. Those are the four, the three, excuse me, liquor stores that we're, that we're approving, so everybody understands that. So, all those in favor of renewing those licenses, please signify. Vote is 5-0, there's no, nothing opposed to, and now, just a, a motion for the renewal of liquor licenses at, 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 at the restaurants. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Motion's made by Ms. Angelides and, and seconded by Mr. Lowe to renew the liquor licenses, but comments, Marie?
On the effective.
Waso, right.
That is, we have to, they don't get the full license until they show us the completion of the work.
Right, so I think we need to make it contingent upon their completion of, and being, completing inspection, I think we need.
You just issued the license, and then it's the state, it's the AVCC that basically says they're not going to issue it.
That's how we did with the meeting house?
Yes, that's in the meeting house.
And because the meeting house is completed, and so they're all done? Okay, so that's, so we don't need to have contingency, okay?
Okay, now, but there was a, a question about the meeting house, excuse me, Luigi's, I had two questions, one was, their application did not have workers' comp insurance signature on that application, it was just submitted, and all the others did, and I'm wondering if that's actually legit, and we're supposed to look at stuff like that, Stephen, I mean, aren't we?
I'm not the liquor license administrator.
Right.
That is way above my pay grade.
Oh, no.
So, do you want to make a contingent, found that has to be signed?
The only thing that Debbie highlighted in going through all of these, and she's, as you know, pretty diligent about putting these things together, was the tax issue for one of the applicants, and that was all straightened out, so, as far as I know from her, all of these are ready to go.
Right, but there's no tip certificate for Luigi's, nor is there a signed workers' comp insurance application.
You did the same thing you did with the bottle shop.
Fine, I'd like to make it some, a, an amendment that the liquor license for the renewal of Luigi's be contingent upon submitting a tip certificate and a worker's, and a signed workers' comp insurance application. Motion's made and seconded by Ms. Angelides, so we're going to vote on the amendment, all those in favor of the amendment? Any opposed, the amendment passes 5-0, so the amendment, the amended motion is to approve the liquor license for Delaney's Market, Grapevine, Iron Chef, Lee Brothers, Long Meadow Country Club, Luigi's, Max's Burger, May Petit Wazo, The Kitchen, The Meeting House, Twin Hills Country Club, and Umi Asian Bistro.
So moved.
So, all those in favor? Any opposed? Vote passes 5-0, thank you, folks. Yes.
Yeah, Mark, I'd just say, for Luigi's, this workers' comp form, it has the insurance company name, the policy number and everything, the expiration date.
But it's not signed.
Well, it would be signed by the applicant, you know, so that's not a hard thing to do, is it?
Well, no, it would take two seconds to come and sign the thing, right, all you got to do is sign it.
Speaking of that.
But they have the insurance.
There's several things.
I guess they don't trust you anymore, Jackie.
Marie, make sure that this, you get this from Mark.
Get one from Mark, oh, and it doesn't just stop.
At the last, at the last meeting, the blue folder didn't pink it past me.
Oh, no.
It was terrible. Okay, we have a sign request for the Knights of Columbus Ski Sale, is there a motion to approve the sign request for the Knights of Columbus Ski Sale? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made by Mr. Lowe and seconded by Mr. Foster. All those in favor, the ski sale sign allows them to put it up for an extra few days. We're also going to talk about, why don't we just do the ambulance fund policy revision, Paul, because that's something we should be able to handle pretty quickly?
Right, speaking with the fire chief just recently, again, we were looking at the policy, there's two things that we really want to change here. First of all, a new ambulance is now exceeding the amount of the original fund balance policy when it was created, the $250,000 mark. We're just recommending that we change that amount to $350,000 that the ambulance fund can accumulate in there. And then we changed some wording, because not only do we get certain revenues from users, but there, we found other revenue sources for Medicare stuff that the administrative assistant to the fire chief actually does some forms, and we get additional funds other than from users, basically from Medicare. And I would also say that to increase this policy to a $350,000 mark is going to also, whatever the amount is, it doesn't make a difference, but it's going to help me doing budgeting on the revenues, because basically what I would do, if we had to get an ambulance, say, every seven years, I would divide that by seven, and saying, I would then need like $50,000 a year for the seven years, and we would keep that revenue number below what the historical trend has been as far as revenue, so we always have that building up, so when we do need it for any type of new. So when we do need it for any type of new equipment, we have the funds available.
Okay. Are there any questions about the proposal? Is there a motion to accept the revised ambulance fund policy? Go ahead, Tom, I'm sorry.
A question, so, you know, you have, yeah, sources of income, and you said accumulates monies charged from directly related to ambulatory services. Do we have to put, like, a number in there, or a percentage, or...
I don't, I don't think so.
'Cause it isn't all funds, it's just part, it's part of funds, right? I mean, or is it all?
The funds that accumulate from charges directly related to...
The funds that collect from insurance companies still go to the...
Yeah, but I don't think we're breaking it down by percentage. I think all, all the funds that we collect for ambulatory services are basically going into that fund.
Well, they all are.
Yeah, they all are. It's not, it's not only certain funds, it's, they all are.
Okay.
Whether they're from users, or whether they're from the state or federal government.
'Cause I wonder if we should have the word "all" in there? All monies charged directly from ambulance fund? So it's clear.
Which paragraph is this?
So sources of income, if I understand you, Tom?
Yeah.
The fund accumulates, and you would insert the word "all" in front of the word "monies."
From charges to directly related to ambulatory services.
Okay.
That is what happens today.
Right, no, that's fine.
Yeah.
Fine, okay. All right. Okay, that, with that change, I think, rather than making amendment, we'll just vote on this as, as modified by Mr. Luciza, okay, with the word "all monies" added. All those in favor, is there, I don't know, do we have, yeah, we have a motion to, do we have a motion?
Do we move?
Need to a motion to approve the ambulance fund policy? It was made and seconded. Okay, all those in favor? Any opposed? It's five oh. Thank you very much. So we're gonna try to, Paul, how about, do we wanna talk about tax classification a little bit?
I will talk about tax classification very briefly. You know, just very quickly, we're scheduled to have that, the tax classification hearing in two weeks. Things have gotten back on track with the Department of Revenue and the Vision Software people. But preliminarily, you know, Mark asked, actually asked to put this on, but we're talking about, our percentages between residential and commercial are not going to change, whatever the values are. They're basically gonna be a 95% residential, 5% commercial. And when we talk about utilizing a split tax rate, 'cause that is the main issue of the tax classification hearing, there is a huge shift that when you just take a, I'm not gonna pass those down, it'll show the numbers, this is actually from last year's numbers, but when, a simple one penny reduction to the residential rate increases the commercial rate by 24 cents. So, you know, there's always a thought of trying to give the residential people a little break, but I just wanna make you aware that when you do that, there's a major shift, that you are now shifting that money over to the commercial. We're still gonna raise the same amount in total, no matter how the, how it's divided, whether it's equal, or if there's some kind of shift. And that's just the point I wanna make, that because of that 95-5% ratio, it gets very onerous to the commercial properties with the small shift in the residential. So, I don't know what else that you guys would be looking for in two weeks. They've historically have done a presentation with average, average valued residential homes, average valued, you know, commercial properties, so on and so forth, and they will give you this identical type of chart with the updated figures at that, also for consideration. But again, if there's any other issues that you folks wanna address, I'm happy to listen to them now and make sure that they get addressed prior.
I would just, last year I went through this exercise because Mark is concerned that the commercial properties are undervalued. And the only way to do it really simply is I took shopping centers in Long Meadow, tried to similar shopping centers in some other towns, per square foot values, they're very, they're really close.
Okay.
Just as one example, Mark.
Okay.
Long Meadow Shop, per square foot, assessed value $181 a foot. Center Square, East Long Meadow, $120. Center Village, next door, $127 a foot. So, doesn't look to me like it's undervalued.
Okay, thank you.
Mark, can I make a brief comment on this?
Sure, go ahead.
As we reported last, at the last meeting, there was a software issue that, as Paul said, things got straightened out, but really Jessica, our assistant assessor Jessica Guerra and Paul really deserve recognition for the work they did in not only documenting the problems, which have been numerous and persistent over the past five or six months, but also staying on top of the vendor to make sure that we got the resolution we needed to be able to have a tax classification hearing, as opposed to sending out an estimated tax bill, which would have been a really big deal. It's one of those things that wouldn't seem like a big deal, but it definitely wouldn't have been a big deal to the taxpayers. And this is one of those things where a lot of time and energy and concentration went into it, and it was really because of Paul's and Jessica's effort that we're not in that situation. And actually, and our assessor, Ken...
Rogers.
Ken Rogers, who's our, our contracted assessor, really was the one who noticed a lot of this upfront, and was running his own calculations to double check what the software was putting out. So it could have been a big deal, and it was averted by the work of Ken and Jessica and Paul.
I'd say it was mostly Jessica and Ken who probably did it. I just kinda filtered it. Once it got to a certain level, you know, certain things had to be acted upon, but they're, they're the ones who on a day-to-day basis were always calling Vision, saying, "We found this, we found that." You know, and then elevating it to a Vice President of Product, which, again, I'll give credit to Stephen for calling, we had a conference call last week, you know, just showing our displeasure with, with what they've, what they've sold us as a product last year, a so-called software upgrade, as they would like to define it, really didn't do us any good, quite honestly, and created more havoc for us. It's kind of a, we're more of a beta site, we felt like, than anything else for them. So, but our displeasure was, was told to them, and regard, you know, they moved quickly once that phone call was made. They must have put us on top priority after that, 'cause things got, things got straightened out pretty quickly afterwards.
Yes, Paul, the only thing I would ask is, is if it's possible in the next two weeks, just to come together with a list of the tax, tax rates for residential and commercial of five or six surrounding towns, just so we can see what, you know, whether it's, you know, Springfield, East Long Meadow, Hamden, Palmer, Agawam, West Springfield, those kinds of, if you could just have those so we can take a look at bad news, I don't know, whatever it is, just see how they're doing. That would be helpful for me.
Okay.
Thank you. Marie?
And I know when we went over tax classification issues at the Tax Ceiling Task Force, and we had assessors come in? Is that who came in?
Yeah.
And the, Mr. Rogers?
Right, I was Ken Rogers, I also.
One of the things we talked about was the, that he said that they really don't do any real audits sometimes on some of those self-reporting that's coming through, and we said maybe we should start doing some of the, doing some random audits or something. Do you remember that?
I, I, yes, I do. I think they are required to take, if they, if the, and Rose Crowley's here and probably knows a lot about this too, if they do a, I forget the name of the form that they fill out for their personal property, but...
Now, it wasn't personal property, it was looking at the leases, in other words, they were saying there were, their leases and also their, their actual balance sheets go into deciding the valuation of property. And that, we said, "Do you ever look at the actual underlying leases?" And they said it was self-reporting, and we said, "Did you, would you ever consider audits?" And he says, "Well, that might not be a bad idea, we should consider them." So if you could check back with them...
I'd have to check with Ken on that one.
To see if I'm reporting it correctly, then, so I just wanted to know, maybe we should be following through in that one step, because that seemed to be the only thing that might tighten up our commercial evaluation a little bit.
But you, you're specifically mentioning the word leases, the underlying leases in there, okay? And that's, that's the key, 'cause I don't, I remember something a little bit differently regarding personal property.
Yeah, I, I think it was talking about the valuation of commercial property is often based on the income production, and the income production was, is based on their balance sheets and their leases, and he said it's self-reporting. So I said, "Do you ever do random audits?" Or someone else within the group had said it, and I think, so if you could just check with them again to see if I'm misremembering, which is a possibility. All right, thank you.
Yep. Great, anybody else have any requests? Fine. Just a, the last item on our agenda for new business was a charter review. I just want, it's more of a quick comment. I, I've gone through quickly the recommendations of the Charter Review Committee. I have a meeting scheduled with the Chair of that committee, Dave Martell, to look a little bit more about what he was recommending, but they, they made 20 what they called non-financial recommendations, and then a few financial recommendations. And I was hoping to split this into a couple of groups, and of the 20 non-financial recommendations, 10 of them are, are pretty administrative. They're, they're cleaning up language having to do with the transmit, transition from one charter to another charter, cleaning up language, adding things, you know, that have to do with, you know, open meeting law considerations and things like that. And so, what I was looking to do was bring back to the Select Board, and I'm not gonna do it tonight, but I'm gonna do it after I meet with Dave Martell, probably in five groups, groupings, now that I've looked at it, to do this. The first group would be all 10 of these administrative changes, and I'd identify them, and if you want to, I can certainly send them to you in an email, so you'll see of their recommendations which sections are fully administrative. And then of those, some of them are not administrative, or would I say, you know, just, you know, they have to do with actually changes to responsibilities, some have to do with the school committee. So we look at those as a, as a separate list, list of items, I think. And then, also then, there's the financial, which I probably wanna split into, they had two or three things, and one was the Finance Committee, and a lot to do with Finance Committee, and finally, there's a lot to do with the Capital Planning Committee, and so we probably take those as separate sections. So I was wondering if anybody had any concerns with us doing that, figuring that if we split it up, we're more likely to get discussions focused on the, on the different areas, as opposed to trying to take this all on in one bite. So if nobody objects, I'm gonna bring these back in these five sections, and the next, hopefully in the next meeting, we'll take, take on the administrative ones. I think we can probably push those through for, certainly something at the Springtown meeting, if not, get to the second section or third section at that time. Marie?
The only additional thing is, I keep hearing different things. We heard today that someone's talking about bringing a recall petition forward for changing the charter, and I thought, anything that had to do with terms of elected officials had to go to a commission. And then someone else is telling me, "No, it doesn't have to go..."
Recall, it's not, not, doesn't have anything to do with a term, it's an aftermath of a term.
I don't know, so...
So that, I, I...
If you could just check with Dave, so, which way that goes, because you're saying it just, it is just a...
Well, I'll send you, I'll send you the guidance on it.
You'll send the guidance on it?
Yeah, I've got.
Yeah, I think, Mark, Mark, I talked about this offline, I think people need to be clear that the stuff we're talking, that he's talking about is just related to the report of the Charter Review Committee, which has nothing to do with the community conversation going on right now, which we heard at the very beginning of the meeting about wanting to change the charter in response to the specific situation regarding the school committee and superintendent. That has nothing to do, or the Charter, the Charter Review Committee's report and recommendations were completed before that hap, before the vote to non-renew happened, so they really are two separate things, and I just wanna make sure people are clear, this isn't...
And it doesn't include recall, and nothing...
There's nothing in there that has anything to do with recall?
I mean, there is a provision to change what kind of vote is required for renewal of both the Town Manager and Superintendent, but again, that, that recommendation was made, I mean, many months ago.
Right. But that wouldn't be in the first round of administrative changes anyway, or the second round, by my assessment.
Procedurally, what it is, if we vote this, then it still has to go in front of Town Meeting?
Right, it would have to go, absolutely, these would go, what we'd be voting is to put these together in Town Meeting, and that's why my thought was, get a Town Meeting article that you can kinda put your hands around, that, you know, if, if, don't, don't wrap up the non-controversial things with the controversial things, 'cause you'll be there all night and you won't get anything done. So we might even split some of these non-controversial ones into, you know, Article One, and Article Two, and Article Three, and have three different, you know, just, and the wording is pretty obvious when you look at it, when they talk about how they're proposing, it's like, I did kinda go through it.
And you need that by the end of February done, if we're gonna make...
Well, that's why I only think we're gonna get through the first couple of groups of it.
Oh, okay. So you're not planning on making it?
I, I don't, we'll, you know, we're gonna give it an effort, but, you know, I, that's why I don't wanna hold up the, the easy stuff, if you will, well, if we, to get, by getting bogged down in the other things. If we only get two or three of them in February, then we'll only get, get two or three of them in by the time it's ready. Okay?
Okay.
So if anybody has any comments? Okay, so that, that's really it. I'm just gonna ask for any subcommittee reports, if there are any? I just have a quick comment. I got an email today, Stephen, from, actually, a member of the Energy Task Force, Marie, I don't know if you saw the, from, from David Miller, that...
Oh, yes.
About the energy audits, that there's now a, an offer to, to fully fund our, a couple of our energy audit corrections, or audited energy upgrade collections. I don't know if you've even seen it?
I have.
But, okay, and, and I think we, if, if it's true, if there are no strings attached to this 100% payment, which is easy to say, certainly like to, you know, just have you take a, take a look at it.
Yeah, I did email David Miller back. The only comment I have is, I did, I will follow up with the consultants, but based on the, based on information that I got from David, it has to be done in calendar year, 2018. And we are without a facilities director. So while I will follow up with the guy and try, I can't promise you it's gonna get done.
Okay, I, I get it, it's December...
Not 'cause we don't want to, just...
It's December 5th, it's a...
Yeah, it's December 5th, we've got, I don't know, this procurement we have to go through, I mean, to get it today and say, get it done, with a Christmas holiday coming, like, the last week of the month is off the table, too. So...
You know, how much money is, I didn't read the full email.
Well...
They're talking about how much?
The difference between their normal payment amount and their 100% amount...
Like $35,000 or something like that.
Might be a difference of $30,000.
$30,000, I see.
Something like that.
Yeah. And like I said, if we had a facilities director that I could just dump this on and make it happen, I certainly would.
If somebody, a portion of that is about bonus.
But the sense is, Marie, that this is a, they, you know, maybe they know it can't be done anyway, and so that's why they're making the offer.
No, I think they have so much money they're given by the state to use every year, and this is now unused money.
Well, yeah, I'm sure it's, it's clear off the stuff. The question is, what is our capacity to be able to do the, to manage this appropriately, on top of everything else we're managing right now? I'll try, I'm just trying to manage expectations a little bit.
Okay. All right.